We had the funniest thing. We drove by Johnson's. Paul's Johnson's.
We're at Jiffy Mart.
And then I, I, yeah. I've done it.
He's like a huge person all of a sudden. I mean, part of it is he's like working.
Tina, can you hear me?
He's got these like big shoulders. He's also just like, yeah, I mean, he's tall.
Yeah.
Tina, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
I sometimes I just, I like will forget. Me in the kitchen or something, I turn on like. This man's giant person.
I better go get the, um, thanks.
He is a, he's a character that one.
He's doing good.
He's doing, yeah, he's doing good. I mean, because in certain ways, he's doing great. He's so into the box and I mean, he's just like.
Yeah.
He loves it. He's obsessed with it. Like a star. And he loves school, but he's also. He's, yeah. He's an extra. He's raised to. And she was, it's like this constant voice.
Yes. I'm seeing that a little bit without.
Yeah. Cause they're starting. I would come in next thing you watch. I'm kind of out with them. Masculine. It's really fascinating. And I, you know, I think we're, I mean, it's. Huge. Came up.
Two nights in a row this week.
Like was really afraid to ask.
Oh, yeah. Maybe not.
Because he was afraid of seeing.
We'll stay up there.
We like, we like, we really had to get in there.
Okay, I think we're getting here.
You know, what's going on?
I'll start recording when you tell me you're ready.
Yeah. I'm just looking at your council, Christine, you're covering down agenda, but you're not. And, and then you're not honest about it because you're afraid of seeing them vulnerable. And it's like.
How's everybody doing? Okay?
Seriously?
Is everybody going?
Yeah.
Emma, Olivia, who else we got?
Maggie.
I can see that.
Hello.
A couple last, in case.
Maggie.
I'm gonna stop recording in just a minute and we'll start.
We're in the art room. There's gotta be a.
Everybody can hear me, right? Tina, you can still hear me okay? Ready to start recording?
Yes. Yep.
No, you're good.
You're good. Okay.
Okay, we are recording and we're about to start.
Can I just want to own a red Subaru sedan?
Red Subaru sedan. I wonder if it's one of the coaches.
They could be the basketball. Yeah. Thanks. Okay, are we recording?
We are recording.
Okay, so let's call this meeting to order a little late at six oh nine. Okay, so the first order of business is changes or additions to the agenda. I think the only item for discussion is the budget. And I think we'll just add a short Mill Street Bridge update in there. Yep. And the presenters are gonna go. Yes. Earlier. Yeah, and so those are, so all of the presentations are part of the, um, principal's report, correct? Yeah. So, uh, we'll have presentations from the kids on the screen. Okay, uh, so.
Wait a minute, Nikki.
Yeah.
I just, I, um, thought we could add just a little something about the, their, the upcoming town meeting. Cause it's only gonna be a few months, but anybody running for school board needs to have their petitions in by January twenty-four.
Right.
So, I'll just mention, mention that at some point.
Okay.
I had something to say about that.
Okay, uh, should we do that as announcements or? Should we do that as an item for discussion?
I'm not sure where it's best fits. It doesn't really matter to me.
I'll put it as a discussion because then we'll get.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of November second, twenty-twenty-one. Colleen? Is there a second? A second? Okay, Sarah, a second? Okay. Um, I don't have them in front of me. Is there any discussion?
None for me.
No, none for me.
Is that, oh, where did that go?
She's in talking to Craig, of course.
Okay. I just noticed that she wasn't at the table. Um, okay, so we'll just vote and we'll check with Beth when she gets back. Um, so all those in favor of approving the minutes of November second, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Presentations, did I need to do a roll call on that?
Technically yes, believe it or not.
Because we're all here.
We're all here, no, then, no.
No, okay. That's, yeah, okay. Um, so all those, so that was four to zero because we're not buff right now. Okay, um, do we, we have public? Um, do we have any public participation or announcements? Besides what we're on here? Anybody up there? Okay. Um, I think we're all good there. Okay, so Christine, over to you. I did that in three minutes.
Well done.
That's impressive. We're going. We got a bunch of discussion. We're gonna drink our coffee too.
Yeah.
Okay, is that big enough?
Yep.
Oh, I'm not sure. Anyone here? I mean, I'm sure, but a good slideshow, right?
It's a big risk. I'll let you know what happens.
All right.
That's good.
Okay, so I'm gonna, um, turn it over to Tina, Skihen, and, uh, and the, um, students who are, uh, have, have volunteered to join us tonight and present their little free library projects. So, let's see if it works. I think I have to.
Yep, so I just, can you hear me?
Yes.
We have two groups of students that, um, were voted by their peers to come, um, seek approval to put a little free library in front of the school. So these are the two models, one from each seventh grade class. They were given some criteria in order, um, to come up with their designs, but I'm gonna let the students speak with you. We've got two groups, Aurora Walker and Maddie Waller, and Olivia Roberts and Cassie Merwin, and they will follow the second time. And I must say, it's so good to see you without your masks on. I never get to see them without masks. So, um, Aurora and Maddie, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Um, Aurora, did you wanna do the first slide?
Yeah.
Okay.
Little Free Library by Aurora Walker and Madeline Waller.
So you guys have to say next slide. What is a Little Free Library? Little Free Library is a nonprofit organization which helps people get books. You can take books, leave books, or do both. The organization helps people all over the world learn how to read. Next slide.
Our Little Free Library, yes, we designed one. The Little Free Library we designed has multiple stories, so it can hold lots of books. The main structure is made up of wooden milk crates and a plexiglass door. We designed it to look like a little monster, a reading monster.
That's great.
Other things about our Little Free Library. The size of our Little Free Library will be eleven point thirty-eight in, eleven feet and thirty-eight inches by thirteen feet and six inches by thirty-seven feet. Or, no, thirty-seven inches. Like with times height. The location on the, of the library will be the dot on this picture. So it's like by the reading bench right in front of the school where the two trees are. And the price of the materials that we would be using to make our Little Free Library is displayed on the paper that you will see in person.
Do you want me to show it to them now? Or at the end, Maddie?
Uh, probably. Um, I don't know, Aurora, what do you think?
Um, it's their decision.
Why don't we do it at the end and they can take a look at the, the poster and the price?
Okay.
How will a Little Free Library help our school? Our Little Free Library will help our school by letting kids who may not afford to buy books at stores. With our Little Free Library program, kids can get books that are good for their age group, so kids won't have to read very hard books. The Little Free Library system runs on take a book, leave a book, so you can always have fresh books to read. You should choose ours because of our spacious design, so kids can read at their own level without worrying about too hard books. Another reason why you should choose ours is that we created a cute, kid-friendly design which will have readers enjoy all of the books. Please choose our Little Free Library.
Next.
Thank you, girls. And adding more onto that too is that, um, we chose one, a monster, so that appeals more to younger kids. So that even younger kids that don't enjoy reading as much as some others, it still may appeal so that they'll enjoy reading more.
Yeah, this is just.
Thank you. And also, we designed so that there's different levels of the book, of the Little Free Library. And so that the Little Free Library, unlike the lowest levels, that little, smaller kids can reach, it's lower level books. So that they don't have to, like, read books that aren't too hard for them.
Great.
And as they get higher, um, the book levels get higher too, so that, um, older kids can read more, like, hard books, like chapter books and that kind of stuff.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you. Maddie and Aurora, Dr. Baker just whispered to me, who's gonna build them?
Sounds like you, right?
Um, the, the group that selected will build their Little Free Library and install it.
Very cool.
That's awesome.
Okay, Olivia and Cassie, are you ready? Okay, Christine, can you do the other slideshow?
Oh, there's another one? Separate? Did you send me two?
Did you, Olivia, did you send her your slideshow?
Uh, Cassie did. I did.
Cassie did.
I'll pass these down while we wait.
Almost there.
The internet's slow here tonight, girl, so hold on.
I love the monster.
Good to go.
Our Little Free Library Proposal Presentation by Cassie Merwin and Olivia Roberts. We have the next slide.
Uh, placement. We have decided, decided to place our Little Free Library on the pillar closest to the bell tower. We believe that this is a good place because it is out of the way, but not so out of the way that no one will notice it. It is in an optimal place because of the foot traffic that comes through here, as well as the cars that come to, that come to drop off and pick up the students at the beginning and then end of the school day.
Dimensions. Note, our model, which Ms. Skihen has, I believe, was built to a fourth of the scale due to a mishap. Our dimensions are fairly straightforward. We start off with a four inch by four inch by three foot tall pole. On the pole is the set of steps. The first foot step is three inches tall by twelve inches wide.
There we go.
By four inches long. First. The second step is three inches tall by ten inches wide by four inches long. And the third step is three inches tall by seven inches wide by four inches long. So, each step is set on top of, so each step is three inches above the step it's set on. If that makes sense. We then proceed to the library part. At its tallest point, the structure is four feet and six inches tall. The library part begins at three feet and is one foot six inches tall. Our first sh, the first shelf is at, is the base of the box. And the second shelf is set at the ten inch mark. The library is eighteen inches. Each panel, each panel of the library is eighteen inches long by eighteen inches tall by eighteen inches. Yep. Roof is nineteen inches long by nineteen inches wide by two inches tall. Look, there are two roof panels. The middle part of the roof that will connect it is nineteen inches long by two inches wide by two inches tall. The signs are twelve inches long at their longest point and ten inches when they begin to slant. The front panel will consist of a nineteen inch long by nineteen inch tall by three inch wide border and a seventeen by seventeen, a seventeen inch long by seventeen inch wide plexiglass panel. We have six signs.
Why did we pick this design? We chose this design because we believed that it would show kids that reading can be an escape to another world. We thought that the book roof would inspire the kids to read and that the signs would provide an introduction to many of the worlds that books can introduce you to. The bright, poppy colors are meant to catch and hold children's attention. We also added a sealed glass door framed by wood so that all the kids, kids could see the books, but the books would remain safely latched through all weather conditions. We also have six signs on the post upon which we will paint the names of six well-known magical places from books. Hogwarts, Camp Half-Blood, Middle Earth, Neverland, Hundred Acre Woods, and Narnia.
Materials. The materials we require for this project are a four inch by four inch by three foot wood beam, six wooden, that sounds stupid, six plywood arrows, a seventeen inch by seventeen inch plexiglass panel, a latch system and doorknob, a sheet of plywood, and a one quart of pale yellow paint, one gallon of pale blue paint, one pint of light green paint, one quart of white paint, and one quart of black paint. We will also need tools and hardware. I am not sure why the amount of plywood has yet to be specified.
Uh, cost. We have been given a budget of eighty dollars. We decided that in order to cut the cost as much as possible, we will see what we can come up with without spending any money. We believe that we will be able to get return paint from Sharon Williams. We also may be able to use scrap wood from various places. We can try writing donation letters to hardware stores and frame chopped as well. After we have collected everything we can freely, then we will start spending money. We are trying as hard as we can to stay below the budget, and I have full confidence that we will be able to do that.
Conclusion. Now, after all of this, you might be wondering why you should choose ours. So, I'm aware that you have, well, maybe not many, but a very fierce competitor. So, let me humor you. Our Little Free Library is safe and affordable. It has dimensions to fit many ages. Our library was designed with kids in mind, featuring a whimsical design, bright colors, and well-known places. It is designed to be a safe way to inspire kids to read. We believe that reading is a very important skill that children need to foster in relatively early childhood, and our library is meant to be one way to encourage that. We are overjoyed to be able to design this prospective library and are thrilled at the chance to inspire kids to read. Our library was designed for kids, by kids, so we hope that you will select our library to be erected at Heartland Elementary School. Thank you for your time.
Nice job, guys.
Well done. It was really impressive.
Thank you, girls.
What are we supposed to do? Uh, Ms. Skihen, you would like the school board to vote on the.
I would like them to take some time this evening when they have a chance, maybe before you leave, to give you some direction in which Little Free Library they would approve for us to actually put in front of the building. We would like your support in kind of that final, final decision. So, as Cassie said, tough, tough decision. Ma, uh, Maddie, do you have a question?
Um, yeah, I was also wondering, did you guys get a chance to look at the cost sheet that we had, uh?
Yeah.
Okay.
There, so, we're gonna, we're gonna leave that in your hands and let you, um, kind of mull that over, but, um, thank you for letting us join you this evening. Oop, Olivia, I see your hand.
Uh, Ms. Skihen, do you have the, uh, models?
They have the models there this evening. They're right there in front of them.
Okay.
Which makes it even tougher to decide because I, I don't want to have to decide. You girls did a wonderful job presenting, so you are excused for the evening, okay?
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you so much for your time and I hope you have a great evening.
Thanks, Aurora.
Thank you. Thank you.
That is really hard. Sorry to do that to you. Are we sure? Yeah. Why can't we have two?
I mean, we are the school board.
Well, can we have one here?
Don't get away, answer. That's a thought.
It's an interesting idea. I feel I'm really not.
How do you still be saying?
Yes. There also could be one for younger kids with picture book dimensions and one for older kids with
Yeah, that's a, that's a thought.
More middle grade YA novel dimensions.
You might just have to approve another eighty dollars just twice.
We might. I think we could possibly. We might be able to come up with that.
I think that, that the students are, um, very well, um, willing to look for some donations. Um, I happen to have a brother that has had a construction site going on at his new home, so we do have access to some wood supplies. And I think the girls are very well spoken and would be able to get the supplies, so I don't think this is gonna cost a lot of money. I think it's, I would really, because it's their project and they're doing it for the kids, I'd like to support both if that's okay with everybody.
That's, that's we don't wanna pick.
We don't wanna vote either, I get it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tina.
Thank you, Tina.
All right, Sean, you wanna, you're gonna be front center, right?
Yeah, I wanna stand up. I don't like talking behind anybody's back. I'm a little face kinda guy.
You have to follow that.
I know, I don't know how I can, I don't know how I can follow that. So, uh, so thanks for inviting me, I, I appreciate it. I, you know, I've been in the district now for, it was like three, four years. Um, this is my first board meeting, so this is pretty cool.
Really?
Yeah. So, I, I wanna say, uh, before I start handing anything out, I'm not sure if anybody had an opportunity today to read the, uh, the new Surgeon General's, um, or just to listen to the new Surgeon General and the fifty-three page report that came out. But in case you haven't, I would encourage you, I know that you're all very busy. Just look at the, you know, just look at the brief synopsis of it and don't go through the whole thing, you don't have time right now, but just for your, for your information, fifty-one percent, uh, I'm sorry, this year, um, suicide attempts to the emergency room has gone up fifty-one percent for adolescent girls and four percent for boys. And we know that boys don't report, so probably one of the main reasons that it hasn't gone up. Um, we have a significant issue in this country in regards to mental health. Um, this school district has taken a really strong stance in what they believe and how to go about supporting mental health, and I'm happy to be part of that. Uh, Dr. Baker has been a huge advocate for our work from day one, and so, um, I never had to, you know, sell him on anything, if that makes sense. He understood the need and the value within this district and, you know, for you teachers and for the school board and for the kids especially. One of the things that, that I look at is what is, what is happening, um, within our communities? You know, we pitch schools all over Vermont, um, all over the country, actually. We pitch and we say, there's an issue, there's an issue, there's an issue. Um, and I think everybody knows and understands that, but we have to also ask, what is that issue, right, within our communities? And one of the things that we're finding, and I'm, I'm sure that you guys, if you look a little harder, you can see this as well, is that our kids are disconnected. Our communities are disconnected. Our parents are disconnected. We are lacking connection within our community. And one of the things that We Are Hook does really, really well is we connect with our kids in a way that other people just don't have an opportunity to do. Not that they can't do it, they just don't have an opportunity to do it because of the position that we're in. So I wanna pass around to you guys, um, just the data, um, that has come about, and I'll explain it, um, since September of this year. The following data is a representation of We Are Hook's information collected up to date of twelve one. Um, so, and I will say, I'm gonna give you, oops, I'm gonna give you guys some numbers of how many kids we support, and since twelve one, we're already, we've already since added a couple more kids, uh, so I think we're somewhere up to seventeen individually that we've supported this year. Um, we use two specific screeners at intake to gather the most information possible. Uh, we use a generalized anxiety disorder screener, the GAD, it's called the GAD seven. This is, this is, this is a standard data. Oh, yeah, yeah, you can see the information too, yeah. Um, there's a, there's a. That's the standard one that, you know, anybody who goes to therapy, any, any doctor, any, any clinician, anything like that, they're gonna give kiddos the GAD seven, right? This is a standard rule and guide, so they, we have an idea of, of, of how they're presenting and what's going on for them specifically. This year, what we've decided to do was we're always looking for something different. How can we continue to be better, if you will, than the next mental health agent? Or the next group of people that are trying to do the work? How can we be innovative? So we decided this year to partner with M.D. Logics or Behavioral Health Works. Dr. Allentine developed this program, uh, probably around twenty years ago. It's been in Pennsylvania for years, California, and as of late, um, they have taken over the entire state of Michigan. And they're in every school offering the behavioral health survey, and they offer some of the things that we offer as well. Um, and not as far as the, the actual physical work that we do, but as far as the survey stuff, we have basically everything that they have. What this survey does, it allows us to get questions to the answers that nobody's even thinking about asking. What I mean by that is this. We get, our, the kids that we. What I mean by that is this, we get, our, the kids that we see are in tier two here on the M S S system, right? They get sent to us mainly because of behavior and or slash anxiety. So in the past, we only focus, are focused on the anxiety, and some things may come up, right? And we could say, oh, you know, it looks like this kiddo maybe is struggling with some trauma, there might be some stuff there, and we have a lot of these meetings and talks about what these behaviors mean. But because of this behavioral health survey, we actually know by the way that they answer the questions, okay? So we are able to specifically identify what's happening by the way that they answer the questions. So, for instance, um, one of our kiddos, hold this down, I have too many on my hand here. Let's just start at the GAT seven really quickly. You'll see with the GAT seven, um, we have fourteen kiddos right now that, that are, so far this year, that have, that have popped into the system here. Oh, he printed out both of them for me, I'm sorry, and I took the whole packet. Does anybody else have Weathersfield? I got a Weathersfield meeting next week. Do fourteen kiddos. Um, and what we'll notice is that the average intake for the GAT seven is around eight. It gives you the score, it's about eight point seven five, it will tell you here, zero to five, five is mild, six to ten is moderate, eleven to fourteen is moderate to severe, and fifteen to twenty-one is severe anxiety. So with everybody coming in around a moderate level, what we've noticed is that during exit, they went from eight being our standard, our standard rate, our standard uh, score, down to two. Right? So we're talking sixty, around thirty to sixty days, we're reducing that anxiety score down to two. And to kind of give you a little bit of what that really, what that looks like is when we did our, our wellness retreat this summer, we had kids for only twelve days. Twelve days, the average score was nine, and we reduced it down to almost two points in twelve days of just the kind of work that we do. So it's really in-depth, it's very consistent, excuse me, and it is, um, it's daily, right? It's something that, you know, look, I am a big component of therapy, I really, really am. I think it's, I think it's great, I think people, I think we should all go to therapy, right? But the one thing therapy cannot do is it cannot see you every single day. There are seven days in a week, and if you see your therapist on a Monday, you got seven other days where a whole bunch of stuff is going on. And so the level of consistency, consistency that we provide allows our students to make sure that they are in the thick of it, that they are constantly getting the support and check-ins that they need in order to be successful. So if we go over to the behavioral health survey, which I, what I find is, what is, what is really interesting is, which I was talking about before, was that if they were just coming for anxiety and we were only checking the anxiety, we would not realize that some of our kids are, are struggling with depression, uh, trauma, risk for PTSD, which pops up, suicidality or self-harm, right? And then one, and a couple of our other schools have popped, um, for kids that were, um, physically or sexually abused. Okay, so with this survey, we're allowed to look deeper, we're allowed to look behind the behavior. And a really great, for instance, is in one of our other schools specifically in this district, a girl was struggling, she wasn't showing up to class, she had a lot of stuff going on, teachers had no idea what was going on, so they refer her to We Are Hope. We started working with her, and sure enough, she popped for sexual assault. We were able to actually get her the support she needs. Mom sent us an email, oh my gosh, thank you so much for the work that you guys are doing. And now the kiddo is actually going to class, going to school, wants to be there. So, um, this is, this, this survey, or thi- this, this new M D Logix and Behavioral Health Survey has really allowed us to step outside of the work that we were typically doing and give everybody in this school a much, uh, uh, a deeper, in-depth look into what's actually happening with the kiddos. So instead of just referring because they're in tier two, now we're looking more at what's behind the behavior, what's causing it, so that we can get them the proper supports overall. And I think that's the key, right, is that we wanna make sure that we're not just putting Band-Aids, right, on, on what's going on. Um, and I think one of the other things, and I'm not sure if the, if the board knows, one of the other things that we do that I'm not sure if any other organization does, is that we don't just work with the kids. We don't. We work with the parents, the teachers, the principal, the assistant principal, right, the superintendent, right? We work with everybody to make sure that there is full wraparound with each and every kiddo. And one of the things that we also do is, once a kiddo graduates our program, they have full access to come back to us at any given time, right? And it's typically outside of the contracted rate that we already have with the school, and we take care of it. We don't worry about it. We don't worry about costs. We don't worry about those things, because we wanna make sure that all kids have access to support at all, at all times. Um, I get calls from parents on Sundays. I don't know why they like Sunday, but they call me on Sunday. And they say, Sean, I'm having, you know, I'm having a meltdown, I'm having a crisis, blah, blah, blah. All right, let me walk you through it. How do we do this? And they don't get a bill, the school doesn't get a bill, I'm, it's called, David said, hey, I got a call from a parent on a Sunday. We just talk, right? It's all about making sure that we are part of this community and that the kids have the support that they need, so, um, that's my report. Does anybody have any questions? Any questions at all?
Um, I'm trying to understand the graphs. So are these, I know, I'm an engineer. Um, so is this one child or is this?
Nope, this one, see, it says right here. So you have two child, two, one.
So we've tested five kids.
So, yeah, so this is, so there's two behavioral health surveys. One is for kids twelve and older, and then there's the other one, so there's adolescent and then the child. The child one, we actually send a link home and then the parents do that with them. And then we still, and then the data still comes. And the great thing about this, is the second that it's done, the data populates, so we have it immediately. So I know that in a lot of schools, they do, uh, like these state tests to check, you know, how kids are doing, mental health and all that stuff, and sometimes they get sent out and you don't see them for a little while. This all populates immediately, so we know that, you know, soon as it's done, what's going on.
Are they anonymous surveys?
These are not, because the students come in and they actually take them with us, we know exactly who they are.
React, you can react directly to the.
We react directly to the need of that child in that moment.
So obviously you're getting parental permission for the kids to, to take it.
Great question. So when, when a child is referred to us, we have a parental, uh, parental permission form. Within that permission form, it lets them know that we are, we are giving these surveys, and we don't even do any work with any child until that form is signed and they've agreed that it's okay to do it.
Do you ever have, are there ever kids who you'd like to scream, but the parents aren't giving permission? Or I, I mean, I imagine that some of the things you're screaming for.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, we do a really great job of selling this to parents. I think that, you know, listen, one of the things that, that, that I think that helps us is like, you know, we go in and we say, hey, we're not here to dig into your life, like this is data that we need to collect so that we can help your child. I don't care what's going on at home. Obviously I do, but, you know, we don't really care what's going on at home. This is about, you know, how we, how we best support. And parents are, they're signing off. They don't, we don't really get to any parents that are.
I can, I think, I think I can think of one maybe in the last.
I had one parent when I first started, it was, it was a gentleman, and he was struggling with it, and I said, bring him into school, I'll sit down with him and talk with him, and he came in, he sat in my office, and we talked for about thirty minutes and went through the thing, he says, okay, that sounds great, I'll do it.
Well, and the kids have to agree to do it too.
Yeah, so that's, that's the other piece, and I think that's why we're so successful, is that for one, I interview every child, um, myself or James. And they can't be part of the program, but they don't wanna do it. So you can't send your kid and say, you gotta go to We Are Hope. I'll tell you no. You want kiddos that know that there's something going on and they wanna figure out how they can work through it, and that's why I believe we're honestly so successful at it. Any other questions?
So I'll just share that, um, just so you know, in the past, we've had We Are Hope three hours a day, which serves about six kids. Um, and this year, through our ESSR funds, we have had, um, We Are Hope full-time, and we are always hope. So it's been, it's been really helpful for a lot of, a lot of our kids.
And have you found that, um, as a result of the last couple of years, that we have a higher demand? Or are we, did we always have that demand and we're now just, it was like that because we have funding?
Um, we've always had a demand and that we haven't been able to meet. So, I, I mean, just from being here every day, the, the mental health is, is not good.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
And our adults.
Yeah.
So I would say it's a longer waiting list this year than it has been.
Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, one of the things that we're seeing, and Christine can probably speak to this, is that we have, now that we're in the building, we have kids that know who we are, we have kids that know the coach that, that's here. And so I know that before, I had kids that would literally come up and ask me, like, can I go, can I come with you? And I'd be like, why? They'd be like, well, because I have anxiety too. You know what I mean? And these, these are literally the conversations that we're having in the hallway, um, with kids. I mean, I walk through the hallway, I get hugs from kids that I used to work with. I mean, that's pretty cool, you know, um, just being an outside agency to come in and kids recognize the work that you're doing with their peers, um, and, and themselves, so, yeah, it's, it's been pretty awesome.
Yeah, we're, we feel lucky, lucky to have We Are Hope, so.
Yes.
Well, thank you, guys. If you have any questions at any time, you can email me at sean@wearehope.org.
All right, so it's still me, right?
Yep, back to you, Christine.
All right, ladies, are you ready? All right, so this is our, um, let me get the right tabs from here.
I know, it feels like there's gonna be a performance.
It really does.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't matter, they'll, they'll still see you. Just stand there, you're good.
So I'll, I'll introduce, this is our five-six amazing five-six teaching team. Um, and they, uh, we met a, a little bit ago because we know that we have. We know that we have a, um, one bubble in this school, uh, it's one, one class of, of kids, and that's fourth grade this year, moving on to fifth grade next year. And so the team, we've been brainstorming what that's gonna look like, and they, um, would like to share some information tonight and some thoughts and some ideas on what it could look like. So we have Anna Turk, and she is fifth grade. So their fifth grade, um, team, and they've been together for quite a long time, they're.
Eighteen years.
Beth, uh, Beth Digler and McKenna Wilkinson, our new, um, sixth grade teacher. And then we have Jenny Duranza, who serves as an interventionist in that, um, pod. So are you ready, ladies?
Sure.
Yeah, all right. Thank you for the intro, Christine. Um, so we're here to propose an opportunity to address the challenge that Christine just mentioned. The class twenty-twenty-six, our current fourth grade cohort, um, is a small class of fifteen kids. Um, the student, the schools made temporary adjustments over the last several years that include changing staffing, groupings, and classroom locations to accommodate that group of persons they were first raised. This, um, current class, the fifth grade cohort, uh, class of twenty-twenty-five, is the largest group in the building. Um, we have thirty-six kids, and they have some pretty significant needs, and, um, they've really been adversely impacted by our current staffing shortages. Um, so as these groups are poised to enter the five-six pod next year, we have a proposal which addresses both the anticipated numbers and the needs. The plan, uh, provides a solution for the next two years, so it's not just for next year, but the following two years. Uh, maintains current staffing within the pod, and it addresses the increased academic and social emotional needs, which Sean just mentioned, of the classes of, the, the current fourth and fifth grade classes. Um, our proposal requires funding a half-time teaching position for the third or fourth grade, and we've compiled some data that will illustrate the need as well as the structure of our purpose. Next slide.
Do you tell, oh, next slide.
Yes. So this, um, it's kinda small for you to read maybe, but, um, this just kind of shows the staffing slash budget implications. Um, we're hoping to combine the, an existing part-time interventionist position that is, um, already funded with a new part-time teaching position to, um, take care of the third or fourth grade teacher shortage that we will potentially have next year. Uh, so just to provide you with some data and some more information, um, about these two classes, this is, uh, the Exact Path Proficiency data, and this was a test that the kids took in October. And, um, it's for math, reading, and language arts, and you can see here, the, um, the red is students who scored, the percentage who scored significantly below, and then below, and then the green is meets and blue is exceeds. So what we did, we looked at this and we combined these two categories, which were below proficiency. And as you can see, for math, it was sixty-seven percent were below, um, in reading, it was sixty percent below proficiency. And then in language arts, sixty percent as well. But this is the current fourth grade who will be fifth graders next year. And this is the same data for the other class, uh, this is the current fifth grade who will be sixth graders next year. Um, their proficiency in math was seventy percent below, in reading, it was sixty-one percent, and for language arts, fifty-nine percent. Oop, that's me. Um, so just for the data story, um, S P A C, obviously, this is a pretty easy slide to read, but for the current fourth grade, when they did S P A Cs, uh, in June, May, um, you could see from math, so the green is level three or four, so meeting the, uh, the standard, and the red is level one or two. So oddly enough, the, both, uh, sections of the test for the fourth grade were identical in their percentages, um, but not in a good way. So, yeah, thirty-eight percent were, were meeting and sixty-two percent were not. So, um, next slide. And then this is the data for the current fifth grade, so you can see that, uh, as we found from the Exact Path data, that the math is a significant need for the current fifth grade. Um, so seventy-eight percent of the kids were, uh, at a level one or two, and then twenty-two percent were meeting the standard at, um, level three or four. Uh, E L A was a little better story, but still, you know, what do you consider a good story? Um, so more than half of them were not proficient in E L A, so, um, forty-four percent were. So that just sort of continues our, uh, reasoning for wanting to address that need.
How does that compare to the rest of the population?
Oh, I'd have to dig, but the, the scores are not great.
Yeah, throughout.
Yeah, throughout, yeah, throughout the school, throughout the S U, I think, um, I, I, I'm, I'm just comparing, I've got the computer, so it's interesting, the S P A Cs really line up well with the Exact Path scores that we found in the past, we've used T M P and we haven't.
Yeah.
Found that, so that's, um, interesting.
That's good.
Yeah.
The matching.
Found of an assessment that can give us.
Yeah.
Progression data, yeah.
Data, yeah. I mean, we can look at the dashboard after, Nick, I can pull it up.
I'm just wondering, like, is this the whole school?
I don't think it's all, yeah, but not good. It's a tough cohort.
Yep.
Okay.
Next, next slide. All right, so in both, you can see there's a significant, uh, percentage of the class has on an I E P, a five oh four, or a student support plan, as well as a third, fully a third currently, with some on the waiting list, um, are being serviced by H C R S, by We Are Hope, or by Jean Morse and Alyssa McDermott. So in each group currently with kids on the waiting list. So that kind of combines, uh, the academic and the social emotional, which when seen together is kind of an even scarier picture, or a more daunting picture, especially for a class as large as that one is. And because of that, next slide. This is, uh, the behavioral data for fifth grade. Fourth grade stays in its same room as fifth grade did last year with no transitions and, uh, remote protocols in place. I mean, uh, COVID protocols in place, so they, they didn't leave their seats. This was seventeen. They didn't leave the room to go to.
Right.
Right? They didn't transition rooms. So this was third grade, um, this, and we left in February, so this is six months of, of third grade. This is all of fourth grade in the self-contained space, um, and this is so far this year in fifth grade, so three months of fifth grade.
The struggle is real.
The struggle is real, and a lot of. And a lot of those are kids whose emotional or academic needs aren't being met. This is the support they had last year, the same number of students, had two teachers, a full-time special ed para, two full-time special ed paras, and a general ed para for those thirty-six kids. This year, the thirty-six kids.
Actually, I'm just gonna interject, because it wasn't thirty-six kids last year, because.
Fewer kids.
Just thinking about it.
Probably not thirty, it's twenty.
Something like that, yeah.
So this year, that group has the two teachers, one part-time special ed para, one part-time general ed para, and one time interventionist. They split all of these with the sixth grade.
Right.
So it's significantly less support, which could be contributing to the score. Openings are there, we just can't spell.
This, this pod is short, three special ed support staff members.
And part of the difficulty with that is when people are hired, they often have no experience because of where special ed is in, in trying to find people. So they come into the place with the, the need is to, to work with the kids with the greatest needs, and they don't have any experience. Therefore, we're looking at this and asking you to consider our proposal.
Yes, the next slide, please.
So what you're looking at up here is the current structure of the five, six pod. Within sixty-two students, we have two fifth grade homerooms and two sixth grade homerooms. So we're looking at the pod structure right now as it is with one interventionist. Next year, what we're hoping to do is maintain the staffing and have three sixth grade homerooms and one fifth grade homeroom. The fifth grade teaching position, and you can go to the next slide, because this is going to go into this in more detail, the fifth grade teachers would job share. So one would teach E-L-A and social studies, and one would teach math and science in the single fifth grade classroom. And then for sixth grade, we would maintain our current positions as teaching E-L-A and social studies and math and science. But what that would allow for is, because the fifth grade teachers are job sharing, that would free them up part-time of the day to provide intervention within the sixth grade classroom, which is really, it has that need, as we just saw. All four teachers would have a homeroom, so we could hopefully give the sixth graders a smaller class size in the homeroom while providing them intervention in the course subjects in addition to our interventionist. And this plan would hopefully translate to a two-year plan. So while next year, the fifth grade teachers are job sharing, and the sixth grade teachers maintain their full-time positions, the following year, the fifth grade positions would go back to teaching full-time, and the sixth grade teachers would do the part-time plus intervention work. So that's the end of our slideshow.
And then that gets our small bubble into middle school.
Yes.
And we're through.
Supported, yes.
Yeah.
Where you kind of do the same thing.
Right.
Into middle school.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, well, and it would, yeah, it would, it would give our middle school teachers just fewer.
Fewer kids.
Kids per. But, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any, just.
We can share the slideshow.
I have to say, like, my gut says that we wouldn't need as many paras under this. Like, we're getting teachers instead of paras.
Yeah, we're getting.
I like that. I like that a lot.
Do you guys have a plan for the rest of the year, or you? We have.
We're hoping for hires.
I know.
We may have a potential.
All over.
Hire.
And that column that was yellow, the behavioral column, that bracket we all went.
Yeah.
Is that, that's half a year, so that's like.
No, that was September, October.
On trajectory, you'd be off the page, yellow, with the rest of, okay.
How are those, how are those homeroom student counts compared to the rest of the building?
Oh, well, this year, the sixth has thirteen and thirteen, so it would be twelve, twelve, twelve. I think one year in the past, the, when there was a situation where they had, like, twelve and a half, there were two people sharing twenty-five of them, is that accurate?
Well, it's very great, that's a very small.
I think it would be.
Third grade is, um, twelve and, uh, thirteen or fourteen, maybe, or twelve and thirteen?
The, the homeroom of twelve might be a little smaller than.
Maybe one or two, yeah.
Probably, just a couple of kids smaller. But the homerooms of eighteen are by far the biggest. The other, the other largest may be, I don't know, fifteen or sixteen, I'm not sure. It's about that. Yeah. And we keep gaining. We just got another new student.
That's gonna be my question, do we anticipate that the move-ins will continue, perhaps not at the same rate as it was last year, last summer? But is that continuing to happen?
Good consideration.
Probably not a lot of inventory right now in the market.
Market's still good, there's not much inventory.
Right. So third grade has twenty-seven, so thirteen and fourteen.
That wouldn't be considered a bubble, I don't think that's.
No, no, fourth grade's the only bubble. Twenty-four at second grade, twenty-five at first grade, twenty-seven at kindergarten. And I think Linda told me we're projected around twenty-six kindergarteners next year, which is higher than it's been in the past couple of years.
That's good.
And we may get a few more.
But stabilized.
Still early.
It's funny, we had kind of anticipated roles going down, like we.
Because school-wide, you're down a little bit, right?
Fifty, forty.
We're down.
I mean, it's, the, the long-term trend is down. And we're at that.
The long, right.
That uncomfortable, right around thirty, where it's too many for one class, and, you know. But in this case, a smaller class.
Yeah, I think the, the COVID impact is.
We have two S R positions that are for class size reduction, correct?
We do.
And so those, that funds in place for the next two years.
For the next two years.
Two fiscal years.
But we don't, where are those positions going?
And that's not twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Well, they are.
And that's not spoken for yet.
They're currently in place.
No, those positions are in place, they're in place.
What grade are they in?
Otherwise, we have combined classes, right? That was our plan.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because our numbers were getting to that breaking point, right?
It was like, no, we're.
So we had planned to combine, actually, five, six, right, one year, almost at COVID, and three, four, I think, and then, and then COVID hit, and then we polled Tina, and we polled our interventionists, and we made them classroom teachers, and to, to stabilize that, to keep that structure in place, we were able to hire two S R-funded teachers. So.
And all these rooms are proximate to each other, right? They're close.
Yeah, it's a great, yeah, they're right in the hall, yes.
It's like a pod, yeah.
It is.
It is.
Yeah, it is a pod.
We like pods. Pods have worked for us.
Yeah. And they do, this team has great, I'm trying to think, synergy?
We like synergy.
Yeah, they work together well, they.
Can you just touch the screen?
Yeah, sort of.
It does that every hour.
Yeah, they collaborate well. And so I think, you know, that's important in schools, that, that actually impacts student learning when your, your teachers collaborate and work together. Yeah, so. So later tonight, I'll be presenting the budget. And this is not currently in the budget, this position, and we talked about how we could make it more palatable fiscally. And so we do have a half-time interventionist position that we would, you know, use that funding. It's, it has to be a certified teacher for that position, and increase that to one full-time teacher. So you lose a half-time interventionist in, in one room, but you'd really gain an interventionist in this land.
Right, yeah, for two grades.
Yes, yep. So.
Yeah.
But you can think about it, and we can look the numbers, and we won't have solid num, we don't have solid numbers this month, but we have kind of a ballpark.
Yeah.
But I think your presentation was wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Stop and see if you get some takeout in there.
Cookies, grab cookies.
It's because I never eat lunch.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, exactly. I'll share, I'll share with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please, Craig would be so upset.
No, I'm, I'm going for it, I've got one. You got to take the mask down and.
Good advice. Yeah, pardon me.
I'm boosted on Friday.
Yeah.
I'm boosted.
I'm boosted.
Boost wave right now.
I talked with a coworker today who went.
I think Tuesday night, where you're fully.
All right, so I'll just, my report is pretty short, um, this month, we put, my report is short. Oh, I know, it's already set, okay. But we had some important stuff.
We did.
We did some important stuff.
It was good.
The kids were great. So just a couple of highlights from the month. We did have our fire safety presentation. You can probably find Ricky there on the floor.
Yep.
Um, we did it in the gym, and we were planning to be outside, but it was a cold and rainy day, so we cleared the gym, and it actually went really well.
It was awesome.
Yeah.
It was our best fire prevention yet.
Really good.
Yeah, it really was.
And I would do it again, just like that. I mean, we could do it outside, it'd be nice out, but that structure and layout.
Yeah, it's fine, yeah, thanks.
It was great. So we were able to do it, which is important. I don't think we did it last year at all.
No, we didn't.
So the kids really need that information.
They did.
Since my dryer caught on fire Friday night.
There we go.
When it rains, it pours.
Yeah.
So it went really well. So we are thankful for the volunteers that came in and taught our kids about fire safety. We did have a student council planned spirit week that went pretty well, and they, they came up with different days, and there are kids dressing up as what they want to be when they grow up, and they had a camo day, that's Ms. Kiefer. And her husband's camo something, I don't even know what that is. And we got some twins there.
I know, some are twins who are trying to be twins, I'm not.
They have same hat. They were great.
It's close.
So, so that was fun, it is fun to have some, you know, to do some normal stuff during COVID. We had a great, uh, fourth graders cooked Thanksgiving and invited a lot of staff to come down and have lunch with them, which was also pretty fun. All right, update, I, I can change this, because I have a potential new hire. Katie and I interviewed somebody today, so we think we have. We think we have a, a person, but we're replacing a person, so we're still at our. So we are still actively working to fill positions.
What position is that, is that a para, or is it a?
The, the position we filled is a, yeah, special ed support staff.
Okay.
Position, and we're, we're losing a special ed support staff person, so we're still, we're, we're still kind of where we're at, but we have some things going on, and we may gain one more person that will go right to the five, six pod, because they're really, have the least amount of support right now. Um, I have posted the long-term subposition for Mr. Sturgeon for his paternity leave, and I have not had one applicant. So if you know anybody that would like, it's six weeks, it's, you need to be a certified teacher, but not necessarily in P-E and health. If the pay is negotiated by Dr. Baker. So it's more than a, a sub, because you're planning and work. So if you know anybody, that's why I put that in there. Just a quick COVID update, we are in the midst of a bit of a uptick lately, so I can share some of the data we have, but I will, we talked earlier, we had our first vaccine clinic November eighteenth. Roughly ninety kids were, were vaccinated that day, fifty-three of them were ours. And our follow-up booster is Thursday of this week, so. And we are offering staff boosters, if they would like to get a booster, they can get a booster on Thursday as well. So we had four cases over the break, over Thanksgiving break, first grade, we had a, a, right before the break, we were able to employ test to stay for the first time on November twenty-third, the day before Thanksgiving, before we went on break. Fifteen first graders participated in that. It took a long time, partly because no, no parents had signed up for test to stay, so we had to.
Call them.
Had to call them, and get paperwork out to their cars, they had to fill it out, we had to get them in the system. It took, I listed all the people involved, Lorient's central office was critical, and entering that data quickly into the system so that we could give the tests, it took us about, I mean, depending on who you were, two to four hours to get those done. And the kids cried. First grade was hard. So we were like, oh my gosh, I don't know if we can do this.
Because we have to do, like, the long one, right?
No, but if you're a first grader without your parents.
Oh, sure, sure, that's just good.
You've got to have this up your nose, and some of them were fine, and some of them cried, and some of them, it took us twenty minutes to talk them into it, so that added to the, to the toll. So we've had some more cases, we've had fifth grade, we've had, that was over the break, we couldn't do test to stay because of the timing, because they couldn't be consecutively tested. We had one in TK, we had one, another one in fifth grade, we had another, another case in fifth grade, but didn't have an exposure. And since then, I counted up last night, we've had eleven additional cases.
Wow.
And we've had nine more exposures, and we're currently using test to stay for four classrooms.
Good lord.
So Lindsay and I are getting it really good at sticking swabs up children's noses.
That's why you became a principal.
This training does not go away.
My original understanding was like, every kid had to be swabbed.
If they, if they have consent to participate.
Yes, but it's the, so my understanding was if they weren't vaccinated, they just had to quarantine.
If you are.
If they were vaccinated.
If you are unvaccinated, you must, if you're going to be in school, you have to participate test to stay. Otherwise, you quarantine seven days and get a PCR test, or you quarantine fourteen days. If you test to stay, it allows you to come to school, you are still in quarantine when you leave the building. It really, you're supposed to stay home and not go anywhere. If you are vaccinated, we do not test you, that's, those are the guidelines.
Yeah.
So in the middle level, we have a couple of classrooms at the middle level where we're not testing as many, because we have more vaccinated students.
So will we still be notified if there's an exposure in the classroom, even if our kids are vaccinated?
Yes. Yes.
It's just happened to me.
Yes.
Yeah, in me.
It'll be a very quick notification.
You get a nice notification, and.
And it's, it's tricky, there's so many, like, the eighth grade, second.
I know.
Exposure. You know, you're trying not to give away confidential information, but share information, and. It's all dependent on when you had symptoms or when you tested, and, you know, Annette has that really solid in her head. But, but parents don't understand.
Yeah, no, I mean.
Parents don't understand that.
And there are other, well, I mean, was, I ran into a thing where, because our music school has a completely different protocol, so they, they don't care if you're vaccinated or not. If you are a contact, you cannot come for ten days after your last known contact.
Yeah.
And so I, so trying to pin down the last known contact can be compli, I mean, it's so complicated, but I'm so appreciative of everything everybody's doing, and it's just, you know, we're, we're learning as we go.
We're making it work, kids are in school, right? And that's the most important thing, so.
That's the most important thing, yeah.
So if, come January, we get these fifty-three kids their second shot. How are we doing?
That's.
Is it gonna get better?
That's, of those, that's about thirty, I think I did the math, around thirty percent of that K, of that five to twelve-year-old population.
Yeah.
So we're not near eighty.
The fifty-three.
But we're not near eighty, no.
I know, but there's a lot of people, like, I didn't, I, we're, my kids didn't do that, that clinic, like, we did something else.
Correct, there are other kids.
But there's plenty of us.
After Halloween, we're gonna get a really solid count, because we'll.
Yeah, we don't have an accurate count right now.
But we'll.
Come January, I think.
We'll know, yeah. The nurses are on top of it, but they're also pretty busy.
They're pretty busy.
So that's only thirty percent of our five to twelve, so that's not even counting.
But, but you might, you could have gotten vaccinated or.
It's probably more like forty or forty-five.
Yeah.
It's probably around, yeah.
That's not, that's nowhere near enough.
That's nowhere near.
No, it's nowhere near enough.
Well, you know what, right now, even if we're 80%, I don't think we take our masks off right now.
No, I don't know, I mean, that's not enough, yeah. But like to just start slowing down and stop dealing with all of this.
Yeah, exactly.
It's, it's hit every school in our SU pretty much in the same way. I think Windsor's had.
Yeah, Windsor's been rough.
Weatherfield has had.
10 or 11 cases.
Yep, and so we're all in the same boat right now.
Have you had teachers?
Teachers too.
Getting sick?
Yes, we have, yes, am I allowed to share them in?
Yeah.
We have three staff.
You probably can't say if they're vaccinated or not.
I cannot say that, I don't think, but we have three staff right now. And then we have, we have staff who are, have kids that are COVID, so they can't come to school.
Even from all the school districts.
We are, we are doing our best. We are short staff. Lindsay and I are teaching first grade parts of the day. Here we are.
At least that's your grade.
Yeah, I know, it's actually really fun.
Luckily we've kept them in their right grade.
And people are just doing what they need to do. I'll say the staff has been phenomenal. I just, if I say I needed to do this in this grade, they just do it. And they don't complain, they, they just step up and do it, which has been great. But it has a ripple effect. Pull somebody from here, you know. Plans change at the last minute.
Katie Hearn did kindergarten, I think that was at Windsor, but she.
She did first grade today.
She's doing it.
She had to music with them today.
All hands on deck.
Yeah, so that's the COVID update. That's a little change. Some good news. Beth, Beth met with Dr. Baker, myself and Craig, right?
We were part of it, thank you.
And somebody from Hunger for Common.
Tim did the thing.
And we found a loophole, which said.
You like loopholes?
We could use 2019 free and reduced applications.
Yeah, basically before we shut down for COVID, you can use that data.
For people that had not filled out the form this year.
Oh, good, okay.
By the skin of our teeth at the last hour, about 40%.
Wow.
Which took a lot of, took a lot of work actually, getting those parents to, because we had, we had to find a couple to.
Yeah, sure.
To fill it out again. So, but we're at 40%, which is what we need to be to keep our level of support in title funds for our two interventionists.
Great.
Which is great.
Which is great and bad.
Right, exactly, because we need the interventionists.
Yes, we need them, the kids need them. Staff wellness, also not great. Staff are struggling, it's been really hard, really hard.
Sounds like it's really hard right now.
We've tried to alleviate some of their stress. We, as an administrative team, and some of you know this because you're on the SU board, we've paused the collaborative practice time at the end of the day, some of it, not all of it. And they, I mean, they're still working, they're just, expectations are do what you need to do to survive tomorrow. So that's what they're doing and it seems to have alleviated a little bit, I think, of the stress, yeah. The kids are planning a holiday food drive, you'll hear about that. And just something happy drama club will go on, four, five, six and seven, eight. It's gonna start in January, Jamie has plans, so we're gonna keep them. She does have plans, yeah.
She does have plans.
We're not combining five, eight like we normally would, but five, six and seven, eight as we're doing in sports. We thought it was only fair.
I mean, that's what she did in the fall.
Yeah.
Yeah, outside, they'll be inside this time, so. But we have a higher vaccination rate in those older, older grades, so we feel okay about it. So that's the good news, you saw the proposal and then my budget is later, so. David, you're up.
Yeah, I can just do a quick little, if you're ready. Anybody have questions for Christine?
Nope.
Yeah, I was wondering about the 90 children that participated in the vaccine clinic and 53 from our school. So what was, what's the difference?
It was a public clinic, so anybody could sign up and lots of people did.
I'm glad to hear that. I thought, I thought there was some discussion.
Yeah, where do you try to hold it?
That was.
We did it in the multipurpose room, half the, half the gym. And they set up 12, I think there were 12 stations, right? Vaccination stations in there.
It was quite the operation.
Yeah, we did it at Springfield, it was quite amazing.
Yeah, it was quite the operation.
So there were state people that helped you or?
Oh, yeah, the, the state runs it. Yeah, the state run clinics, they come in and do it. We just have to help them, you know, logistically and get, go get the kids and bring them down and.
Great.
Hold their hands and.
Yeah, sounds good.
Wet their tears.
Do you want to do this one at this site or where at school without me?
Yeah.
I know, I know we swabbed, but they haven't asked us to give shots yet, but.
I'm not jumping out of that.
That, that could come though, I just. You never know, but.
So Scott, when you go to sign up your kids right now, there's really only school clinics.
Is that right right now?
Yeah, so when I signed up, I think it may be, I don't know, I haven't looked.
So there are only school-based clinics on?
So there were only school-based clinics and so you just had to pick which school you were gonna choose to take your kids to.
That's interesting.
So that's how we ended up.
Because probably some of the general vaccination sites don't have the pediatric vaccine.
Because I think the state was putting all their energy in this.
Oh, cool, I got it.
And so I was really surprised.
I'm just not seeing that because I'm not searching it that way.
Right, exactly. And I was like, I wanted to get the kids vaccinated like ASAP. And, but I didn't feel comfortable going to like a different school, so.
Oh, I worked right in the Springfield.
Yeah, and so I, yeah.
No, but they did change sites because I think of that same kind of issue of like where can we have it? It was at the Riverside Middle School with their giant gym.
Right.
Like it was like, no.
Yeah.
Most of our buildings use the gymnasium, which was, which was good, yeah, it worked, it worked out okay. What we're finding with the high school kids now, and I imagine all the high schools are finding this, is that they started a little earlier, right? So they're ready for their boosters now. And then we've had a few breakthrough cases and I'm wondering if it's because they haven't gotten boosters and we'll have to start pushing boosters.
Well, and they're offering boosters though for adults that are at the school clinics.
They are, at the school clinics.
They should be able to get the kids.
Some of the staff, phantom staff have gotten their booster at the school clinics.
But they do, they're doing like a month for boosters, I think.
The high school kids?
Yeah, I don't think they're doing that.
I was gonna say, it must be getting close.
Yeah, I think Trevor was June and he was like the first, like the third day that they could get it.
Yeah, my kids were, my older kids were June as well, so.
Yeah.
So probably January.
January, we'll need to get boosters in them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I do worry about the breakthroughs though.
I know, we've had a couple. We've had a couple, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, there's vaccine research, right? And science is still fairly new, so we're just.
Are you changing every week?
I've got a funny feeling, it's gonna turn out a little bit like, like flu. We're just gonna have to get shots and they're gonna have to change up the dosage and all that stuff.
Yeah, I do too.
I think that's it, yes, I'll just go quick because actually Christine covered a lot of this. We do, Christine didn't mention that basketball started tonight too. And that's what we saw when we were going through with our trays. And we've got that pretty well marked out and carved out for seven and eight in terms of only three times a week. You got, you see, you saw all the kids are masked in there. I thought it was kind of comical the coach showed up, you know, without, without, without a mask. And Daryl was out there and Daryl says, no, you gotta put a mask on. I mean, I think he just, he just, sometimes I do, I jump out of my car and you don't have it on and it's funny. But you are feeling a little more undressed if you don't have your mask on these days, that's.
I think it's more acceptable to be topless in the place.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's kind of, that's real talk there, right? Yeah, there you go.
Way to sneak out into a board meeting.
Yeah, I know. Are we recording? And then K6 will start, K6 will start athletics after January. We're gonna go real easy with them and just not go too crazy with that. Test to stay, again, more time consuming as Christine experienced and, you know, I've even gotten to watch and I've actually now gotten myself in where I could swab, because you have to go on and get listed as a, trained as a swabber, so I'm now a swabber if anybody swabbed that knows. And then I think the big thing, the big takeaway for the viewing audience, so to speak, is just continue masking, sanitizing, distancing is critical and take the quarantining seriously. And I think what we're finding is that people don't quite understand what quarantine means. Quarantine means quarantine. And, you know, we've had to remind people that, you know, yeah, you're just either out and about and that's not good. The second dose vaccines, as Christine said, are coming up here very soon. Student, staff and stress. Christine went through all of this, but what we're feeling was unconditional, unusual conditions. Continued emphasis on wellness all around. Absences all around have been tough, not just staff absences, but student absences. It's, you know, I mean, I think we're doing a good job keeping kids in school, but, you know.
Well, Craig just told me that yesterday was his first day of being fully staffed.
Well, that's what I mean, yeah, that's exactly right.
In his cafeteria.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I noticed he had a big smile on his face and that's what we said, it was the first day.
That everyone showed up.
The whole, across the SU, we have all staff members, so.
The same thing happened at ABS today.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they had the first day of being fully staffed at ABS and that's a very small school.
We have not had that experience yet.
You never know.
We had, last week, we had 13, one day, we had 13 people out in one sub.
Oh my gosh.
Thirteen.
Oh my god.
So that means that that's bullet there, staff is covering for staff and that, that's add. So as Christine said, we tried to develop that plan to address the workload of staff and we've kind of taken that last block of collaboration and giving them back some more time. Because many of them are using their lunch breaks, their, their prep periods to help cover other classes and they're being really good about it. We're also compensating where we can for that extra time that they're working in. And so we, you know, we just want to keep doing it. Budget update, local budgets are in development. Christine's gonna go over yours tonight. And as always, the problem is the state numbers will trickle in this month. And I just heard that the biggest big wig at the, at the state, the state finance office just left and, and of course we only have one guy really now, Brad James, who does the AOE. So I'm, I'm wondering if those numbers might not be later than usual. And I talked to Elizabeth, our legislator, and, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna contemplate again, maybe. It may not happen, but she said they are contemplating moving town meetings a little bit later in the year again just because, you know, those numbers come out late and we're, we're all in the middle of it. And also Elizabeth said that the legislature is very aware that teachers and schools are burdened and stressed and they may find ways, see, because what we could do last year, like let's say we had a week like this last year where we had 20, 20 cases at Windsor or 10, 15 here, we would have just gone remote for a few days and let everybody flush it out.
Right.
Sanitize the buildings, but the, you know, they haven't given us the authority to do that.
Yeah.
If we do that, we have to make those days up in June and that will not make for a happy, you know, happy crew. And the issue budget, those are on the SU and Colleen, I really give Colleen credit. She put a lot of time into that SU budget.
Thank you, Colleen.
And we finalized that. And then negotiations, we, Scott's our negotiator, we have teacher mediation tomorrow. It'll be a lengthy process, we're gonna do a little bit of prep. I have to do a little bit of prep, but I think we're pretty much ready, right Scott? We've met a few times.
Met a few times, yeah.
And so we'll see. And then ESP support staff negotiations will begin December 15th. So it's a busy holiday season for the negotiators who will be at the bargaining table and I'm just hoping that it all goes smoothly. I think one of the things that's adding to the stress of staff is not having a contract. And that always adds to stress. So if we can wrap that, we will. And I think the negotiating team is cautiously optimistic, but we'll just see how it goes. The Equity Task Force continues to meet, we're gonna meet with Melissa Crum next Monday to review the action steps that we, we sort of unpacked policy and we've got some action steps associated with each of those. We're gonna share those again in a little more detail at the SU board and, and with Melissa, Lovell Brown. Some of us are in that, or if anybody, well, you are Christine, right? Is anybody else in that Lovell Brown workshop? Angie is, he's been great, Deputy Superintendent, who's been at this for a long time. And Mary Gannon is gonna help us unpack a proposal, I think, for a job description for, for a DEI. That's gonna, that's getting a little bit controversial in terms of what that DEI position should, should look like. There are some that are advocating for, you know, full-time, creating a department, a direct report to me. And then there are others who think that that's overcompensating. I noticed Colleen, you asked that question at the last, at the last SU board meeting. You know, what should be the scope and nature of the work? And I think that it's hard for any one of us to facilitate this and hopefully somebody like Mary Gannon can do that. But we gotta look at her proposal first, I have no idea what she charges, what she's doing, but we have other people that can do that work as well. And that might be it, I think that's it for me.
David, is the, is the meeting with Melissa Crum virtual?
It's virtual, we do it virtually, yeah. And that's the, and that's the, that's the anti-racism Equity Task Force that meets with her. That's a group of about 30 people, they've been working all summer with her.
Is that, is that committee open to other school board meetings? Board members that want to just come or not really?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, we haven't advertised it in the past, but I think if we continue our work with her, we're gonna open up that committee, Scott. But this is really our last meeting, it probably would be.
Okay.
Yeah.
A little awkward to jump on at the end, but I think we, I think if we, if we stay with her, and there are some people who really want to stay with her, because she's been, she's been incredibly helpful, so I think that.
Who's sitting with Lovell?
Lovell, Lovell, that, Lovell was actually, let me stop presenting it. Lovell was actually something offered through Vermont Superintendent Association, Vermont School Boards Association. I had sent out the stuff, but you get so much stuff, you probably got it from the SBA too. So you had to kind of register for that. And I know, and, 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 and some of us, I know.
Elizabeth is there.
Elizabeth is there, she's on, I think Amy is there, Christine's there, I'm there, Angie's there.
Katie's there.
Katie's there.
Brittany's there.
Brittany is there?
Brittany is there.
Patty, I think.
Yep.
Kate and Colleen are there and Brian, I think all the administrators are there.
All the administrators are there. But, but we also opened it up, I think, I know I sent it to board members, but again, it was a big commitment. It was like two, two or three hours a month and you had to commit to. But we're gonna get a lot from him and a lot of ideas. He's got a lot of templates and, and schematics and systems.
Right, it's educator stuff, right?
It's educator stuff primarily. He's a superintendent from New York and he's been at this equity work for a long time. But what I like about what Lovell does is he really keeps it, he gets a lot of kids involved too because that's a step we haven't taken yet. We haven't gotten the kids engaged and I think we gotta get the kids engaged in this, both high school and middle school and elementary, quite frankly. But like, for example, at our last session with him, he talked about a, a day, a full day and the kids planned the day all around different cultures and races and, you know, they, they did that whole piece, so. So I think we'll, we'll keep working with him and I think at some point we probably will open the task force up to kids as well. And though I've even had a couple of kids ask about it, they've heard about it. Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's just that ongoing work. And again, we, you know, people talk about getting together and, you know, public involvement, but you can see even at this meeting tonight, I mean, people are just drained. And even though we're virtual, we don't have a lot of public at this meeting and I think it's just because people are, they're hunkered down and they're just trying to get from one day to the next. And I know I, I certainly have felt it and I've been in the profession a long time. And I feel bad for the young educators because this is really all they've known. And when you think about it, our K1 and 2 have never really played school. This, and even this year, they're not playing school. I thought they were gonna, but, but, but they're not really and it's really, it's sad in some ways. They're really good about it. I mean, you walk around, they've got the little masks on and they're, you know, but it's, it's just so sad because we didn't, our young, you know, our kids didn't have to endure this. And it's, I think it's just what it is for now and it's adding to a lot of, so our behavioral numbers are up. I know that for a fact. But that doesn't surprise me and I don't think we need to, you know, go nuts over that. I mean, I think it's just part of that trauma-informed work and so we just have to keep going. But I don't think we should judge ourselves based on that or our families based on that. It's just the way it is and, yeah, so.
I don't think we do. I do worry for our teachers, like I just, you know, how can we get help to them and I don't know that there's an answer. Have we thought about any kind of, it'd just be something somebody else has to do, but pulling in some volunteers?
You, you mean, you mean volunteers to help in the buildings, you mean?
Yeah, relieve.
Yeah.
No, cause we're not supposed to let people-
You can't have more people in.
We've talked about it, but yeah.
Try not to do that.
I did, um, I didn't send this, cause I didn't want to, I'm really good at coming up with initiatives.
I know you are. I was looking at our radar list.
I know, I was doing, actually, um, but I did stumble across a website that I typed up and emailed you guys that I didn't send. And it was like mindful Mondays. And it was a whole stress reduction program from, I think it started in Baltimore City. But it's, uh, stress induction, meditation exercises designed for classrooms.
That's interesting. Yeah, send it to us.
Yeah, okay. I don't wanna start another initiative.
Well, some of the vendors, I mean, there are some vendors out there that just aren't real, but there are awesome things. I've looked at some virtual things lately that are really an attempt to, I saw one just the other day that gets teachers together on a weekly basis, voluntary, it's free, which is nice. If somebody's trying to make money, I get nervous, but
No, this is something, it's free. And you can look at the whole program and literally like, it's actually for classrooms.
That's good. So the kids can engage being-
The teacher can spend literally five minutes and like, and then host a yoga session on a screen.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, part of me is just, we need to get these interventions in place. Yeah. We need to pay more, we need, we need, I mean, I just know with my own children's education and behavior.
It makes a huge difference.
They, their issues could've been solved by interventions, but in the middle of the pandemic, it's not, it didn't happen.
Exactly.
I think if we can get those interventions and get twice as many as we think we need, because that's truly probably the amount we need. Is where it really is, because that's-
You're talking about the social, emotional interventionist.
And, and both.
And academic.
I'm just thinking of my own current situation in that it's social, emotional, it's, it's all of it. But, you know, so much is solved by just having somebody give that extra piece of attention. When a classroom of fifteen, you know, the teacher can't sit there and say, you have the ability to do this, I believe you, you can do it. You know, they can't be cheerleaders to everyone and help talk them down from every anxious thought. And so that's, you know, where, how can we, how can we support that further? And it's, it's just frustrating.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't-
I was gonna say, screw yoga, whatever. Yeah. I'm just thinking of bringing the whole class down, but yeah.
I mean, I would also say like, as we, especially as we approach vacation and holidays, that, you know, letting teachers know that if they need to have a movie day.
Yeah.
You know, that's okay, have a movie day. This is the time to, to kind of relax some of the, and, you know, bonus points if it's a quality movie that maybe, you know, a nature documentary or something, but even if it's not, I, you know, as a board member, I really like what, what, whatever people need to get through the next couple of weeks, I think, um.
Well, that's what I think, we're in a less of more situation, because our kids can't take anymore either.
Yeah, they've had it. They've, they've had it. And they don't have good ways sometimes to express it, you know what I mean? We can talk about it and sit here, but they, they just feel it and then they don't quite have, they don't have that, they don't have that frontal lobe stuff all happening for them and
Yeah.
next thing you know, they, they're just yelling at each other or-
Yeah, shut down.
Exactly.
Okay.
Well, Dr. Baker, one thing you, one of your slides, I guess you took your slides down.
Sorry, yep.
One of your, one of your slides said, um, that the S U budget was completed and it just-
That's true, we do have another conversation.
We have that one conversation left.
Coming up Monday night.
About the assessment.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
The food program.
We have not finalized that, that's correct.
But we finalized the amount.
We did finalize the amount. It's how we're gonna assess it, that's correct. And that's on the agenda for Monday night.
Okay.
That's one week away.
I'm done, thank you.
So I'm gonna be annoying and make us all stand up. And we're gonna pull this table back three feet and we're gonna tilt that one and tilt that one so that we can all see each other.
Cause my neck is killing me.
Is anything plugged in?
That is annoying.
Christine's plugged in, but if we told her. I don't know about you guys, my neck is killing me.
You want it? Are we good now?
Yes.
Should we take a two-minute break?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna drink some of this water.
I think we're good.
Should I move this?
Yeah, a little bit maybe, not a whole lot.
We were all in a line.
And I think it's hooked to-
It was. And Katie was the only one on the street and now she's not even there.
Did we lose Katie? We might've.
Yeah, so now we're all, it's just us.
Yeah.
We're all staring at a wall.
Is Grandma, is Grandma up here?
Oh my God, yes. Grandma, my, my husband's grandmother had a stroke when we were there.
All right, we're taking a two-minute break, I'm gonna turn the sound off. I think you've got the sound on yours. Do you remember how to do it? What do you want your screen?
Um, my daughter's been before. Like she's getting stronger, she can use a walker, she can help to get dressed, she can help to get food and
Look, taking oats there, right?
She's getting better.
Don't mess yourself up if you're-
So she loves her. Yeah, no, it's lovely to have her, I mean, honestly, she's she's a ninety-eight-year-old woman who like was fully independent.
Where they are.
Yeah. Got her hair done early, the Italian lady, so.
You gotta find your hairdresser.
Look at that, huh? Are we good or what? We are good.
She's great, we just had to, you know, turn our house into like, you know, we stopped her toilet needs. She's here.
Can, can we use these bathrooms for you?
Yeah, yeah, you can, cause you're-
You're not eight years old.
Excuse me.
No.
Why is that like that?
Oh, right, she doesn't get that. And there aren't even people, there aren't even people.
So what do you do?
No, and, and even if you can't find people. I was involved in a care, a lady on the hall there and she
I wasn't the middle school area review yet, like, didn't they move the school?
It's been that hallway, sometimes it's been at the top of the hallway, sometimes it's been at the bottom of the hallway. At the end.
Everyone says, oh, I would never do a, my sister's living there, nursing home.
But doing it at home is so hard. Yeah, K two used to be down taxi business.
This is the living.
Where the- Yeah. Those three big classrooms at the very end, but kindergarten classrooms. They're awesome for kindergarten classrooms.
Cause they big.
It's crazy, so, so when we moved that down to this end, it was really hard for people to do. That, that was back in the day, we had two to three classrooms per grade.
Yep.
When I started, they were like, per grade.
She's that, she's that.
We had two portable classrooms.
She had twenty-five students, forty-three. And she had a quad.
That was ninety-five.
Rehab. And she's tolerating it fine and then went and took up a prescription and they were like, it's gonna be two hundred and eighty dollars.
Not quite.
And they, all right, let's see if we can get a more generic than we found. One for thirty-five dollars.
Oh, she liked that.
Except it gives her her price.
Oh, you're a teacher?
And she's like-
I was a teacher when we- I had an extra two hundred bucks.
I said, if you don't wanna take it, move.
Right, exactly. Just don't take it.
So we'll get, yeah, let me figure it out, but I don't think it's gonna-
And then we pushed back to an area and they had done a C T two B top, so that first year back.
Exactly.
And then
So we were there to take her, I mean, she would've died.
Summer of ninety-five, at the third grade, her teaching position here.
Backseat booster, we were driving to the booster.
Then at the end of that year, it was ripped.
And we were chit-chatting, she was
An opening came up.
Were you like in a vaccine with her?
Came back as a fourth grade teacher.
Oh, okay.
Greatness. Cause she wanted to teach, she didn't.
Forever, so we went under a, a little bit of a
There was a third teacher.
He's like, Grandma, what road is that?
And so I taught sixth grade for seven months.
Maybe she didn't hear him, he said, Grandma, what road is that?
And then I left the sixth grade to go to second, eighth grade.
Something's wrong.
When I was pregnant with-
Have you ever seen somebody having a stroke?
Sydney.
No.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
Jason, pull over, pull over. She pulled over and I get out, she went, come on, I think she's dying. Like, that's why I was like, it's Johnny.
When I started teaching, started ninth grade.
And I'm like, I think I need to take her to the hospital.
I came back to work and she was five weeks old. And her daycare was right down the street. And I had to work three days a week. And then I go down and I be able to get a nurse.
So we get home.
Another day.
And she's not dead.
And I did part-time teaching at our firm.
So I'm like, uh, we have to call-
Now we're calling ambulance.
And we did, they came and they took her and they know they have the neurosurgery.
A year to be academic intervention coordinator. And then, which is like an N T S S coordinator, it was a position before his time in Yale that I understand. Wow. Final four coordinator. Wow, that was very old.
It's crazy.
Does Jean did that?
Yeah.
But how, like
For that, you.
Three years.
You're still doing all this before.
Before. And this is somebody that thinks they're dying. So made that decision. I started nineteen ninety.
So she's alive, we stayed seventeen, we've gone
Years ago, I started in the last year.
Like Friday afternoon, we had to take her, we stayed Saturday, Sunday.
It's a long time. But that was amazing.
She's rehabbed, is not having trouble with her side. She's like, her speech is pretty good.
Yeah.
For getting them or not.
It's, she's holding it here in the car.
She got hired here, the year before.
Gets like this, and I'm like, just hit it, Grandma, they said, just hit it.
Yeah. She left for a year to do, um, a year in D C.
She has a very positive attitude.
Then husband was at law school.
So I'll never be an empty nut truck.
No, no, no.
If she's home during the day and you're here, does she always put wood in the stove for you?
She's too proud of that.
My problem, yes.
I bet it is.
So, yeah, that's my life.
That's a lot, that's a lot.
Yeah, it's good though. I mean, we're all gonna get older, right?
Yeah, and it was amazing to, I know a friend of mine, she passed away in January, but she was a good friend of mine, you know, for the last five years. And it was amazing to see somebody with her mind completely intact. She was so, she was still so involved in life and people and, you know.
Now you can go back to your other little slide.
Gave me something to shoot for.
Yeah, it's, it's true. In my mind, I'm like, if she's here for a while, out of the pandemic, it's pretty cool. Yeah.
That'll be great.
Yes. Okay, so we'll come back from break, we'll come back from break.
I think we need a dance.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna go We're gonna go in reverse order, um, for the items for discussion, just add with the budget and stuff like that, I guess. Scott, do you wanna start with the town meeting announcement or discussion?
Okay, so it's kinda like, that was kinda my, um, yeah, sure. So I have a little cheat sheet here, I was just thinking about that. And, uh, so there are two, two board members and I just looked online, it looks like Nikki and Scott are positions are ending in, uh, twenty twenty-two, so those will be up for a election. And I just wanted to remind the town that the, uh, anyone who wanted to run for those positions needed to have a petition. And by January twenty-fourth, and Brian Stroffolino told me today, our town clerk, that thirty signatures is what any, any, any of the folks need to, uh, to get a petition full, to run for a seat, an elected position in town. You can go to heartland.gov.office to see that. So the two open director seats are three and two. But really what I wanted to say is, uh, I think I'm tired of it, so I'm not going to run again.
Oh, wow.
That's the end of an era.
How many years have you been doing this?
It'll be, uh, just shot of ten. It was after a town meeting I was appointed, so, and so if I, if I call it quits.
That's a good year.
I wanted to give, you know, someone in town time to get that petition and, uh, do it that way instead of, uh, instead of another way which would be, uh, you know, resign one day and, uh, have the position appointed. So I kinda like the, uh, the cleaner, it seems cleaner to me to have the, to tell the community about that ahead of time. So plenty of weeks now to, uh, for someone in town to choose one of those. And if Brian will tell people, you know, if Nikki, if Nikki chooses one, then Brian will tell people which one is still open and, uh, they can make their, make up their mind.
Scott, that's a really big decision.
I'm not really sure how to even respond.
You would be greatly missed.
I probably used the wrong word, tired of it. I'm not tired of it. Um, it's, um-
Ready to change focus, ready for something different.
Yeah, I think, um, I don't know, I, I wanna be completely open, I'm just, it's, um, really a lot of weight and
Yeah, it is.
and, and is this point in history is a lot of weight, so.
I agree with you.
And I'm feeling a lot of it, so. A lot of pressure. Thanks a lot.
Yeah.
You're right, Scott.
Thank you for everything. And you've taken on a lot of the weight.
Well, I don't know, you know.
I do know.
They make to differ.
That is, that is, um, and that's a good, that's a good thing to have out in the open, like, if a person has got a lot on their shoulders. And, uh, I'm, something I struggle with is like, oh, now if I want that done right, I'm gonna do it, so. And that's no way to be, to live and so you better not be that person.
Every one of us has a table. That's why we're all here.
So I'm gonna miss you guys.
We're gonna miss you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
This isn't your last meeting, is it?
No, no, no.
No, he's gotta get us.
Want the community.
He's gonna get us past the town meeting.
No, and I'll go to the town meeting information session and everything, but whenever, and tonight, so, uh, David said the legislators, legislature is throwing the idea of extending
Oh, yeah, so actually, maybe-
So I don't know.
It'll take a while. Might not be soon.
I have a resignation option, may struggle.
No, yeah, no.
Well.
And Nikki, have you given any thought? Are you still thinking still or?
I don't.
Still thinking?
Yeah, I'm still thinking. Um, we'll see. And Scott's thoughts today influenced my thinking.
Yeah, I bet they do. I bet they do.
Yeah.
Tough work.
It's tough work.
Yeah.
It's been a tough year. Yeah.
But you guys are some of my best friends in the community, so. You know, I don't have a lot of friends, so.
Welcome to the club, Scott.
It feels a little bit like we've all kind of forged our connections in fire this year.
Yes, exactly.
And, uh, yeah, no, it's a
So thanks for the time.
Yeah, thank you, David, thank you so much.
Making that announcement, thank you.
Okay, so I just wanted to, um, I think everybody saw that there was, um, some information circulated about the Mill Street Bridge um, and concerns about bus stops on the Listerb, and I wanted to hit that, um, and just talk about in public, um, all of the work that Christine and David have done to try and address some of those concerns. Christine, David and I, and David Ormiston, have all been in touch for weeks about this, um, subject. And it isn't something that anybody has taken lightly. There's been a lot of time and effort put into trying to solve problems and, um, it's just where we are. So maybe let Christine
Share, um, talk about what she's doing. Part of the process, um, you know, we are informed when something like that's gonna happen in town. Um, I had a direct email from a parent, uh, requesting some, you know, how we were gonna address the issue because it would impact the bus stop. So, um, you're probably very familiar, I wasn't, cause I don't live here, but, um, I did some investigating and had some conversations, so Mill Bridge is gonna, it, it closed. And the town manager didn't know how long it would be closed, because that would be based on the assessment of the repair to the bridge. So, um, that, um, bridge, uh, some children, I think there are nine families that live beyond that bridge. Two of them that I'm aware of have children in the school, they walk across that bridge to the bus stop, um, which isn't that far from, from their house. So obviously we wanted to provide a bus stop that would work for the kids and the families. So I sent John Samuel out a couple of times, talked to the bus company, talked to Dave Ormiston. Um, and then I actually said, John, I need to see what we're talking about. So he took me out and we did the run. So the only option, uh, for a different bus stop really is, um, the backside of the Mill is Mill Road. And it's, I think it's a class four road, it's not really maintained very well. Um, it's gonna be maintained this winter because it's the only way out for these families that live there and it's the only way in for fire trucks or whatever. So that road is a Heartland Road, um, it comes out on Quarry Road. And when you, I think it's Route Five, you enter Quarry Road, the first part of Quarry Road is owned by Hartford. They maintain that part of the road, so it's not a Heartland Road at all. And then the road becomes private and it's owned by Twin State Gravel. And typically there's a gate on that road because they don't want people on that road. It goes to a pit where they get gravel and there are large trucks coming in and out. So we, we tried to explore like, can the bus go down this far down Quarry Road and is there a safe turnaround? There's not, um, a safe turnaround that's maintained by the town. Um, I asked if the bus could go down Quarry Road, there's a compost area, turnaround, pick the kids up at the Mill Quarry intersection. And, uh, really what it comes down to, it's, it, the people that own the road, it's a private road, they do not want transportation on the road. They don't want buses on the road, they don't want kids walking on the road because it's not safe.
Yeah, because they're driving big drop trucks down the road every single day.
So they said, they said no. They are, um, Dave worked with them to grant permission for those residents to be able to drive on that road in and out. But they said no to buses and, and also, when I spoke to our bus company, they said, we don't drive on private roads. So we tried really hard to get a bus stop closer for those kids to be able to walk to it, but we were unsuccessful. The closest stop is Dale's, um, trailer park at the recycling, uh, part there. There's recycling. It's right on the end. I can see it. I can't remember what it's called. Which is about two miles from, from the homes. Um, and that was the best that we could do. And so that's what we offered. And I know it's a hardship on some families because I know, um, some families go to work and their children walk to the bus stop on their own and they can't do that now. So that impacts schedules. But, um, we certainly tried and, you know, were, um, the word I got from Dave was, uh, the assessment, um, the damage wasn't as bad as they thought it might be. So the bridge is closed right now to foot traffic and to cars because it's just not safe to cross. They're going to, I think, um, they're gonna do the repairs in January and it should be, he thinks, done by the end of January. So.
So not too long.
Yeah, it's a short, I mean, it's long if you have to, if you have to work schedule.
Yeah.
But, um, short, uh, shorter than he had anticipated.
Was there incident on the bridge? Like, does something break or is it just?
It's another case of a hole.
Yeah. It's like a 200-year-old bridge, I think, right?
Okay.
So it's old and it needs some decking with rotting and they thought it would be, it might be structural underneath, but it didn't turn out to be so.
That's good.
Yeah. So that was the story.
And I think that's, I mean, the solution is consistent to what we did with Ferry Road as well.
Yes.
Um, which also had to go through, literally through the quarry to get to, um, the residents on Ferry Road. So I think it's a hardship, but.
Yeah.
We did our due diligence and tried our best.
People work hard and they have to work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, okay, uh, so now we're up for budget.
Okay. I'm gonna share, so I will share, I mean, from the last time I presented, not a lot has changed, um, with the budget. There are some. All right, um, so I'll, I'll go quickly through. Only a couple of things have really changed. Why is that not working?
Yeah, there you go.
Share this one instead.
Yeah, share.
There we go. That's weird, huh?
Yeah, I know.
Trying to make it bigger?
No, I just, I clicked on, I tried to advance this slide and it went. Oh, my gosh, she's talking for Scott. Okay. There we go. Okay, so I went over the goals of the budget, um, at the last meeting. I'm just gonna pull up my notes here. If I can get to them.
Try doing this.
This is strange.
The internet's wrong.
Oh, God, computer. They go on one tonight. I just wanna see my notes in case you have questions about the numbers. Okay. So, um, again, the budget, uh, the goal is to align it with the strategic plan, our continuous improvement plan and education quality standards. I shared last time, we tried to really show the through line for the goals in, in, in the strategic plan and recovery. And some of the things that are addressed, um, in the school through the, through the budget. I won't read them again, but, um, we are at the SU level and the, and the local level trying to really align things so that they, um, so that we're all working towards the same end goals. Okay. Um, you saw this last time and I, I was trying to find last night if, um, what we pay out of our local budget for, um, the SU budget change because there was a change in that amount, um, of the SU budget. But Larry didn't update the slide, so it might be a slight difference, but, um, not a huge difference. Okay. So wages are up and I wanna say that I have not taken out, um, the two Esser-funded teachers. We, we met as an admin team yesterday and I feel confident that I can do that now and you can concur, I think. We kind of played with the next two years and, um, those positions are still in. So, uh, I will talk to Ed about that and that means, um, that there will be a decrease in that line of roughly 123 and change, 123,000 and change for staffing. It does not include what we talked about earlier.
And that's, that would be a half a position, right?
That would be a half. I talked to Ed, um, this, yesterday. Um, and he estimates, um, that it would be an additional 40 to 45,000 to add that halftime position with benefits, depending on, you know, where a person lands.
Uh-huh.
You found it.
Scott, you found it? So that is, you know, the rest of the increase is the, and, and we're not sure where the contract's gonna land, but we have to kind of estimate.
We've got the estimate.
Increases in, um, salary. So that's an estimate, so that may change as well. Uh, benefits are, um, changed a very slightly from the last time I presented.
And this still includes the two Esser teachers, right?
Yes, it does.
So it should, that'll come down.
Yep. It also includes benefits and FICA. It's all included in that, um, for the increase in the music position is included in this. I did that. I think I have notes here. For the two teachers, FICA and benefits would be, uh, 46,978, so that would be reduced.
It'd go down.
Yep. Yep, so that would go down, which is all good. And I can bring that next, um, next month, have those more accurate. Um, contracted services. Again, um, that's, that's athletic reps, that kind of thing. It's gone down. We're trying to really bring, um, all the maintenance work that we can do ourselves, you know, to reduce contracting. We've been doing, so, um, maybe some of the decrease. Um, maintenance and repairs up, and if you remember, that is because of the ski rentals. That's where that landed in the budget. It's kind of. That is, um, I mean, that ski program, half of it's here, $26,000, and then half of it's somewhere else. I can't remember where. So it's about $50,000.
Yeah.
So, so you know. Okay. Um, transportation, that is, um, up. That includes field trips, which we haven't really done.
Never hopeful.
Um, the algebra bus is in there. We do pay for the algebra bus. And.
Piece of it.
There is, you know, there is some money in there for like math team and that kind of thing, which we haven't done in the last two years. I can certainly cut a little bit out of that. But it, um, I wanna say, it, yes, it does. It includes all kids participating in winter activities, busing them back to school, which we don't do now. And that is, uh, $8,500.
$8,500.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So that's, that's why there's an increase in that line.
Right.
Uh, postage is up. I don't know why.
Down for good.
Insurance, yeah. Uh, high school tuition.
Is always up.
Is up, is, is up, but not, I mean, it's, it's not by a lot.
No.
It's really not by a lot. Um, and I have the rundown in the notes of where kids are going and we're, we're sending, uh, the current eighth graders, five to Hanover, 17 to Hartford, four to, I'm sorry, one to Levin and four to Sharon, six to Windsor, one to Woodstock and three, we think, homeschool. We have three homeschoolers in there, so, um, yeah.
That's interesting.
Like current homeschoolers that are gonna stay homeschooling or?
Potentially.
Okay.
Potentially not.
Kids that are gonna move.
Yeah.
Yeah, they may be.
You never know.
Yeah, you never know.
Yeah.
They're just, we're just trying to keep track so that.
Yeah.
There's no big surprises. Yep, so. Supplies is up a little bit. We're trying to get some of the things that we, um, had taken out back in. Teachers have been really good about not spending money.
Yeah.
But I know some of that is Tina and she really has some wonderful plans and ideas for continuing to grow the program she's been sharing with you. So some of it is.
So is that some of the stuff that she presented two years ago that still hasn't been implemented?
Yeah.
Good. Cause I've been thinking about that stuff.
Yep. Um, energy is up a little bit. Not a surprise. Just with the cost of everything these days has gone up. Equipment. And I don't have notes on that. I'm not sure.
Was that where the other ski stuff was too?
No.
Or something?
Mm-mm. That's like, um, regular equipment like, um, laminator, that kind of stuff. So I can, I don't remember why that one was up, to be honest with you.
Is that some Tina stuff or is?
No, it wouldn't be an equipment.
I have a question that might fit in this area right here. The, um, the school board meeting, that, school board association meeting was virtual this year and David, were you there during that?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah. And there might have been other board members.
Yeah, there were some other board members.
I don't really remember. Um, and I was only there for a little while, so I'm not gonna make, paint the wrong picture. Anyways, it had corporate, or it had business sponsorship from around the Northeast. And one fellow was talking about co-op that they run. And they're based in New Hampshire. And their purpose is to provide, um, copying equipment.
Oh, really?
For school. And they provide copying equipment at prices way under.
I remember I sent the link to Larry and it.
Okay, good.
It did, yeah.
It was in a, it was a real, um, uh, attention-getting presentation when this guy gave his little.
Yeah, I thought so too.
Business, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So far. And part of it is with copies, cause now we're S U Y on the copy. We either have three or five, I don't know what, but we weren't up this year, but.
Something.
We've got that, we've got that, uh, we, we put it out of bits, so that could be a company we bid next time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah, this would likely be laminators, that kind of equipment, not, not contracted.
No, the copies are in the S U budget.
Yeah.
Well, that laminator was pretty ancient.
It is. I know that we need to replace it. Been waiting. It is. Linda, Linda said to me, oh, yeah, I know the laminator. I said.
It can heat a house.
It does take a lot of energy to run that thing. And I, it, it doesn't, I don't think it has an automatic shut off. Some come with like, they'll shut off. We don't use them. Uh, this is where the ski lessons are. That's why that is up. That's an increase of $20,056, which is ski lessons, um, at $75 a kid. Oh, gosh, what happened?
That's interesting.
Do you?
I didn't see that.
Did you minimize zoom? Cause this is never.
Never.
Do you know what happened on the screen?
No.
Oh.
Is it, can you tap the screen? Maybe it's the screen.
That would be it.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, she did it.
Okay.
Okay, so that's where that, that's why that went up. Thank you.
Rather sinister.
Um, so this is the assessment, which, uh, was approved.
It was approved.
This is our share.
Other than the, uh, share of the food services.
Yeah. That is our share.
But that's not gonna, that wouldn't make a huge difference either way.
No. Right, and, and, cause the number's the number, right?
Right.
If anything, it'll go down.
We could pay less.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, these are just the estimates of, um, what we're paying out of that assessment. So food service again could change, right?
Yeah.
Could be.
That would be the lower number, I think.
That is the lower number.
That's the lower number and it could be higher.
And these are, these are Larry's slides. I just, um, stole them to share for information.
The equipment doesn't include anything for Craig, does it? This one? No, the equipment. I'm just looking.
No.
I don't think so, cause that would be in that food service.
No, but, but while we're there, cause we did talk about that earlier.
Yeah.
That service line that he wants to purchase, uh, he sent me an estimate tonight. I think it's around $24,000.
Wow.
But I think it could come out of capital.
It could.
I mean, that's where it should come out of, capital reserves, right?
It could. But we would have to warn that, right?
Right.
Yeah.
There's also a lot of equipment.
Hot everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Like that much money?
I don't know, 100% sure, but I mean, I know, I mean, maybe it's 10, but you could get your halfway, I mean, like.
That's nice.
They're not, I mean, they're through the state of the money.
So if you, if you warrant, you'd have to warrant it, right? Or, or write a.
We'd have to put that in the warrant article.
Yeah.
For, for that amount.
And I actually talked to Jim today and I said to Jim, not only that, but is there anything else? He talked about something about water pipes that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Did he talk to you about the water pipes?
Yes.
Yeah. So in other words, I said, well, get, get me that list and an estimate.
Water, not in the kitchen.
You could probably describe, no, it's not the kitchen.
Each classroom on.
Yeah, in, in the classroom.
In the lower wing especially, the oldest part of the school, the water lines, um, come up under the floor.
Under the concrete.
And they're starting to fail. They're old. There's leaks, like fourth grade has no sink or bathroom right now. So you have to go in, and it's like, there's a, what do you call it? Um, under the floor, you can get.
Jackhammer.
Well, you can, there's a little opening where you can get your hands in there. So he wants to, um, actually move those water lines, uh, so that they come, like move the whole. The sinks are kind of in the middle, like the side of the classroom in the middle, but he would move them, like the sinks to the wall so the piping can come and you can have access to it. Um, and he, he wants to do it because they're gonna start to fail.
Yeah.
And so the work needs to be done.
So he's trying to get his estimate on that and then, because we've done this before, then we create the warning. I think you've got a pretty, still a pretty healthy.
We have, um, I have the amount.
360,000.
I know it was in the 300s.
In the capital reserve.
So this should probably be combined, maybe no more than 30, 40,000, so.
In the capital.
Well, we'd have to warn it, you know. And then you also, you had a surplus last year, right?
Feeling like thunder.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm feeling her thunder.
Sorry about that.
All right, so.
I know she wants to go on.
So we know that's gonna be reduced because of those two teachers and their benefits. But will, will, could potentially be increased depending on what the board wants to decide with five, six. A little bit. Um, oh, no, let me go back, cause I have my notes on this slide. You just get to it. So I talked to Ed. Uh, he doesn't have projected revenues yet. Um, he has no idea what the tax rate's gonna be yet.
The CLA.
He doesn't have the equalized pupil or the CLA yet. There is a, so he did say there is a surplus in the state fund of $90 million.
Yeah.
They have not decided how they're gonna use that money yet, which will impact the yield. It may impact the yield, which could benefit us.
Yeah.
Or not, depending on how to use it. And then we had a surplus, a general fund surplus in FY21 of $338,490, which.
Whoa.
Which can go towards tax.
That went up from the last time.
Can go towards tax relief or capital reserve, whatever the board decides.
Yeah.
So that's the good news, but.
That's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money, but we don't know. I mean, the CLA, I mean, you know, the house prices were through the roof and that could be a negative impact on.
The CLA.
On the CLA, yeah, it does. So we have to wait and see.
It did, the, the, the article I read did seem to indicate that the state is leaning towards using the, the statewide surplus to offset property taxes. So, and I, there was some, there was some figure put out. It was like a dollar 30 or a dollar, you know, it was. I don't know, there was something that was down significantly from last year, so. So, and I, there was some, there was some figure put out, it was like a dollar thirty or a dollar, you know, it was, I don't know, there was something that was down significantly from last year, so. That's the sign, but you're right, we can't count on it until we know.
That's right. And if they do use that, the, the yield will be very healthy, which will help everybody, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that. And also the other thing too, I don't, I don't know if you'd be there or not, but we have another more, a year of more time on the excess spending.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Right.
So we should, you know, I don't know.
Which is good.
That's the problem, we, you know, right now, I think you just have to decide whether you've got roughly where you want, exponentialize. Then we always take that first meeting in January, we'll have all the tax numbers. And we make the final decision to go to print.
By the first, we usually.
You see the first decision.
Yeah.
First, we'd have all the stuff by the first, by January. Let's hope, yeah.
Yep. So, um.
So what, what is the, what is the expenditure increase?
Yeah, what's our budget increase from last year?
Do you have that over last year? I know you had that spreadsheet at one point.
And the total expenditure?
The total expenditure increase.
Yeah, I do, it's, um.
So it's actually six hundred thousand.
It's six hundred thousand, it's a six point six six percent increase, but then you can subtract roughly.
One and a half.
The two teachers and the help is another one, yeah, one.
So you're, you're about probably four fifty-ish?
Yep. And then, um.
It's probably more like about a four, four percent increase.
And depending on what you wanna do with the surplus, I mean, that could reduce it, so.
Right.
Well, every fifty thousand dollars you put toward the tax rate, you drop about a penny, so.
So, and if we added in the forty-five thousand for the five-six position.
That's not in this one?
No, that's not in this one.
That's not in this one, so that gets us to.
Let me do some, try to do some math.
But it's only half, but that's, is that a full position we do? Yeah.
It's half, but it's, he said you got a budget.
You got a budget, right.
For, probably forty to forty-five.
Cause those are all experienced teachers, like, yes.
Yeah.
What did you say, Nikki?
Yes, those are all our experienced, more expensive staff.
Yes, yes.
Are we committed to spending the ski money?
The S R money, you mean?
The ski program?
Ski program.
Oh, the ski program.
Yeah.
No, we have not talked about that.
We haven't decided.
We haven't talked about that one.
That's, you know, that's everybody, that's enough.
I know.
Everybody.
The whole school.
Yeah, so, so I'm just gonna, yep, I don't know if it's devil, I don't care, but it like, like we just said, like the, that five-six team is highly experienced and, and expensive.
Team group of individuals, which, and they're great, like they're, they seem to be doing a good job. Um, but it's that thought that just came into my mind of like, are we just paying attention to this group of people because of the, that one situation with the small group of this one class? And when we're talking about expenditures and where in greatest needs, are we just seeing this as a greatest need right now because the spotlight's on it because of this one little class, which is making it weird?
The bubble class.
Versus, you know, is second grade a total mess as well and really needs a halftime position or whatever it may be?
Yeah.
And so really, um, how, how can we accurately think about where the, the needs are raised? Cause I agree, fifth, sixth, next year certainly seems like there is need, but I'm also hearing that there's need.
Everywhere.
Everywhere, and how do we? How do we just say yes to something and not say yes to everything? Like, like, and more, like, cause I think then everyone should be getting an extra interventionist, you know, like how do, how do we?
Yeah, so I talked to them about that. I said, you know, if the board agrees to this and you now have an additional full-time interventionist, probably your current interventionist is gonna go somewhere else, right? I mean, or, or partly go somewhere else.
Yeah.
To, to service another need somewhere else. Um, I was just looking at the dashboard, I think you all have access to the Heartland dashboard, yes? Have I given that to you yet?
I'm not sure where it is.
It's not for public distribution yet?
I don't know. The S, the S back, well, that was with the S back scores that you sent us.
Uh, no, that was what I did. Brittany's put together a dashboard for each school and for the S U.
Yeah, she just sent that.
But you probably have the S U one.
Yeah, she just sent the S U one.
I have.
The link and the information.
I have the Heartland one, which I, am I allowed to share?
Yeah.
Okay. But it's not, it's not shared.
No, I can't find all the information.
But do, don't share it on the screen then?
No, you have that on it. You can, you're on it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We're recorded, we're recorded, so you shouldn't get that number on the screen.
Okay, okay, okay.
But you could share it. With, with each of us, and we can open it on our own machines here.
Right, and look at it, yeah.
Yes.
But the dashboard is gonna be. On the website, it's a public dashboard, eventually, right?
Eventually.
I think that this W S C S U.
Maybe just the S U one, okay.
I don't know.
Is that true, Angie? Is just the S U one gonna be public on the, on the website?
Yep.
So it won't be identified by school.
Yes, I'm just, uh, no, but that was something that was sent to my personal, it wasn't, that I sent it to you.
Sometimes.
Yeah, it was a, that was a parent email.
It was a parent email.
Yeah, yeah, that one, that's different.
I'm gonna send the S U one.
Yeah, the dashboard, that's one page. Yeah. I'm missing.
Who you got?
Well, Google was having issues.
That's right.
Tonight?
Um, I heard that it was, yeah, I can't even log in, there was.
Yeah, that, that's been messing with my head this week.
Really?
Something must be up with Google.
Yeah, that, like, it was all down on the Eastern Seaboard today.
I wondered what that was, okay. So did you share that?
I did, so you'll have to go, uh, you can go to the H E S E L A twenty-twenty-one by grade level, and you'll see S back is in the.
I don't know if they all have it yet.
You have to scroll down.
I got it.
You have to scroll down. And you're not gonna see S back, obviously, for K one, two. This is the, oh, they're still waiting for it?
Oh, yeah.
That could be a Google problem. Did you get it, Sarah?
Oh, sorry, yep.
That's the way. Pauline, did you get it? Yes.
So it starts in fourth grade.
It starts in the current fourth, they took it last year. They, they don't have a comparison year because we didn't take it in twenty, uh, twenty.
Still not working?
Yeah, it's working. Twenty nineteen, twenty.
Wow.
Scroll down to what, Christine?
So are you, if you go to the, um, I'm, I happen to be on the H E S E L A twenty-twenty-one by grade level tab.
Right, that's what I meant.
And then the middle column is S back the pink, but you have to scroll down to see it because.
Okay.
The, but, sixth grade and fifth grade, those are, yeah, fifth and sixth grade are struggling in a way that the rest of the school is not.
That sixth grade's gonna be seventh grade.
That sixth is gonna be seventh, but.
Sixth would be seventh, yep.
That's, yeah.
That doesn't surprise me.
Yeah. That's strange, yeah. I mean, yeah, they're really smart.
Smart, yeah.
Yeah, we're like voting for our own kids here.
Yeah, well, that's what's also weird, I'm like, yeah, I want that, my kids in the grade.
I know. That, that particular class has, has had needs all along.
From the beginning.
From the beginning, we know that. It's not, it's not anything that, um, we don't know.
My sense too is that, is that you, sixth grade is like, kinda do or die too, and, and that, you, you, like, you've gotta get those kids before middle school, you've gotta get them up. Especially to ski, or it's really hard to.
Yeah.
Me, really, anything below the green is not good.
Yeah.
And historically, across the supervisor union, we've typically seen about fifty percent, thirty to fifty percent below proficient.
Yeah.
So, so that's.
We're in the sixty to seventy.
This is sixty to seventy percent for these classes.
Right. That's significant.
I, I think it's okay to.
Have you seen it at sixty percent?
I mean, I can come with two numbers next month too. I can come with it included in the budget, and I can come with it not, and. So if you wanna think about it and look at the deep dive a little deeper.
But it's all, well, that's the thing, is I don't wanna like penalize this group. It's because of the situation, and, but it's like, I also just wanna give the opportunity to, more, like, it's that whole, like, I don't wanna say, no, you can't have this, cause everybody else can't. You know, kinda thing, like, how do you?
Right.
How do you accurately think about that?
I mean, I think if we were not in a pandemic, it would be a different conversation we're having. I think these kids have been impacted. I think, you know, we've had this bubble for years, teachers haven't come and presented to the board to advocate for two teachers for that grade, right? In the past, because last year, they had the teachers who pulled people out of roles to.
Put them in there.
Put them in there.
Christine wanted.
And, I mean, prior to that, we were gonna combine grades, and, and the teachers were, they knew that was happening, and they understood it, and they could wrap their heads around it because of the numbers and because there weren't points on it.
Yeah, 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 something like sixty percent.
So now the needs are much higher.
Sixth grade, man, forty-four.
So wait, okay, we'll start at fourth grade. Of course, the fourth grade has E L A needs.
Oh, yeah.
The fifth grade is better than the, um.
Yeah.
I have to say that I did, I did really appreciate the way that, that they worked together on that and presented it to us. And, um, it, that felt like a very, just like a very positive way to deal with some of the things that they're struggling with.
They did, I mean, they're, and they're, they're telling you the truth.
Yeah, no, I know.
I know.
I'm in favor, I would say.
Only look at that comparative data, the five-sixes.
And I wish we could.
That's one, yeah.
Which would now be the four-five.
So the fourth grade is really. Right, the four-five right now, and that's E L A.
Which is it?
Math is a ten percent. No, yeah, that's not too bad, and then. Sixty-two.
Yeah, look at that.
Sixty-five, that's seventy.
No, um, so the sixth grade, the current sixth grade looks to be a, a math problem.
Uh, you mean the current fifth?
The current sixth.
Sixth.
Cause their, their E L A is. Their E L A looks reasonable.
Sixty-four percent.
I'm looking at other grades that need help. Their E L A looks reasonable, but their math was really bad.
Did, did you send something different this time, Christine? What am I getting? What just came?
Uh.
There's different tabs at the bottom.
Scott, I sent it, you had it, I shared it with you in the past, I just reshared it with you tonight. It's the same, it's the same. It might have some updated data on it, Brittany's keeping it up to date.
That's tough, ugh. What is, um, and, but also.
We thought we had recovery.
This is the pandemic, these are the kids who, these are the kids who lost the first.
Well, this is also kindergarten first.
Kindergarten and first grade, they didn't have kindergarten, you know.
It's no surprise, really.
Yeah, so these, okay, so this is the first time we've used Exact Path. Correct, where's our T M P?
Well, school-wide, we've been using Exact Path for three years.
Some, some grade levels, yeah, have been using it, they, it's been piloted in some grade levels.
It just seems like.
We think it will replace T M P.
The reading. We think it will replace T M P.
T M P.
The reading.
For first grade.
Yep, let me get there.
Like eighty-five percent is below proficiency.
And if you.
And we have no one who's above.
If you spoke to Anna and Shannon, they would tell you.
They would tell you that's accurate.
Actually, every teacher that I speak with about this, they report that kids are about a year behind. It's across the board. I mean, not all kids, but.
There was?
About a year behind.
Yeah, worse, there are about a year behind. That's ninety, that's ninety percent of the, of the third graders are below. And that's like, I mean, that's probably.
It was like the end of first grade, second grade was a business with no intervention, and then third, like, is, it's, that would always key reading, there's supposed to be happening, like, that's really.
You would knock on public, what you said.
No.
Yeah.
No, I'm not.
We'll have to eventually, right? At some point, I don't know.
We're kinda talking about it. I don't know if we are ready for that public, I don't know. I haven't shared it with, all the teachers don't have it yet.
I think all schools need to share it uniformly, like.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's what the.
That's what I think.
That's the one we have to.
Yeah.
This is not a public data.
Well, I'm saying then it's by school, like.
You could do that.
At the same time, it's not like Carlin should release theirs this week.
And then Weathersfield's not at all, or whatever, yeah.
That's true, yeah.
We haven't really talked about that, but we should talk about it in terms of releasing the local data, the Heartland, the Weathersfield.
It's hard to release it without having a conversation about it, honestly.
Yeah, and you can't release it right now, cause it, does she take the S back often?
No, the S backs.
Well, the S backs embargoed.
Right.
That's why we can't share it.
Release it.
That's the reason, I think.
We can't share, okay.
But I think some of this, I mean, this is really, for me, it makes me say, fine, like, like, let's, let's increase the budget, like, we need this, like, this is, this is like, fighting numbers in my mind of like, this is, yes, taxes are gonna go up, yes, this is our language needs are. So when we, it's kind of, um, evidence of the need for investment.
That's fine.
So you guys are a school-wide program school, and the school-wide plan will have to.
What does that mean, Andrew, a school-wide program?
It's, you receive title funds for school-wide plan. And, um, that funds two interventionists. And then, and so that plan needs, which, um, it, that plan needs to be put on the website, and part of that plan is looking, it's not necessarily sharing the data, but you make statements about the data. That your plan is meant to address. So we know that E L A and math are the two areas that need addressing. And, um, so there will be statements based on that, that will support the plan, um, of having the two interventionists. And when you look at that, this, you know, talks about where those interventionists, I mean, the data should talk to about how the interventionists are using their time, so.
But still, I mean, like, two interventionists, I feel like for what I'm looking at these bar graphs is like, it's a drop bucket.
No, you really could use an interventionist at each grade level, it was.
We could use the interventionist in every classroom, like.
So. Yeah.
That's.
That's nothing, you're not gonna get that with title funds.
I understand that.
Like, you know, or title funds, but you're right, you're right. Um, yeah, it'll be interesting to see how this all.
Yeah.
Um.
You got me wrong.
Lands in, in five years, you know. Where, will we have adjusted the data?
I don't know.
It's just like, you know, like women's clothing sizes. I'm still deciding what college, I don't know what you're talking about.
Oh god, that was a great analogy.
True, though.
I know.
Totally is.
No, I, yeah.
Well, aren't they, there, aren't there some places that are talking about adding a whole nother year to the, like, adding thirteen?
Yeah, I thought I heard that.
Well, we did, we have.
Okay.
Or just like failing whole grades and start over.
Keeping back or whatever, yeah.
We're just gonna keep the whole school back, we're gonna retain the whole school.
And I imagine kids have a whole nother extra year school for their school career.
Not if it's like this.
No. Yeah, no.
I'm not sure how they feel about it.
No.
But I do think Beth Bailey would point that this, you know, we have to recognize that we're in the middle, you know, that's part of the reason for the S R funding, we've got some of that S R funding plugged into these interventionist positions, but, you know, I can tell you when this feels up, Windsor, because the Windsor data is rough, and, uh, yeah, they were up almost, almost a million dollars, yeah. In terms of just adding interventionists and S E I's and all that support work. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's unusual, I don't know whether, again, the tax rate.
Fill the position, you're like.
What's that?
Can we even fill the position?
Well, that's been part of the problem, right? We've got, we've got several interventionist positions that are open right now.
Not here.
No, not here, but you're doing other places.
Yeah.
Yeah, Windsor needs two.
Windsor is a school-wide program, and they have no interventionist.
No, cause we can't find any.
Two positions there that have unfilled, are unfilled.
Wow.
And maybe our summer program has to be even more robust this summer, I don't know what that means, but.
Do we have any indication of whether that worked, or whether we saw results from that?
Uh, a little bit, not, 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 not heavy, but yeah, Brittany's got that data.
Well, it wasn't, it was to maintain, and summer programs to maintain, not to increase. So, yeah, there was data, I think it's on.
Oh, you're gonna say that, that summer program is not all.
Like, it's just, but it's not, for the kids that are going. Better in math than E L A.
Yeah. For the kids that are going through issues with anxiety and depression and learning, and they're behind.
Eight months of school's not helping.
Summer school is probably like the exact opposite of what they need, so I mean, it's, that summer school situation is going to fit a small minority of people. Um, to, you know, really address those holes.
Get some reading, eventually, I just, stop putting that pressure on.
So. So.
So.
All right. So the differences are, if I take out the S R funded two teachers and their benefits, it's nine million four hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred eighteen dollars. If I add in forty-five thousand. Did I just do that right?
I think you did.
I don't know. Nine six two nine. Two nine.
Yes.
Say that was.
Nine six two nine.
Uh, subtract one, two.
You have it, uh.
One, three, two, and eight. Three, two, one, eight, and then I gotta subtract the benefits, which is forty, forty-six, nine.
Yes.
You know, isn't this the season or the moment perhaps when we, um, when we would, um, wanna know what the principal and the superintendent were thinking about next year as far as even adjusting the human resources that are here and how that might impact, sometimes we have an executive session and we learn about impacts to the budget as, that are in addition to or adjacent to planned, planned hiring or suggested hiring, excuse me, is that, is that something that's coming either tonight or next month?
Things like returnance, um, non-renewals, that sort of thing, is that what you're talking about?
That could be January, could, could have some of that, yeah. I think the biggest issue is really gonna be, and I know Katie's gone, but filling those positions is, that's been, and now there's, so there's a good, there's two sides to that coin, right? I mean, I think we're gonna end up, and I don't, I mean, I'm just gonna say it, but I think we're gonna end up with another healthy surplus. Because we're not filling positions, right, at the S U level, which will increase the assessment a bit and, and at the local level. So I think, you know, you had three hundred and whatever thousand, I mean, Windsor ended up with a one point two million dollar surplus, and that's true. Yeah.
Wow.
Which is why they're thinking they can jack that budget a little bit and, and do what they gotta do, but, um, but the, yeah, so I think we create another, another surplus that.
I mean, that raises a question.
I still don't tax rate whether, you know, that's really what it boils down to, right, we talk about that every year. What, what can you sell, can we, will this community support the fact that we've really now got two years to recover from not one? And I don't see a ton of money coming from the state.
Well, I think the quick answer there is yes, and they, and our, we would too.
Yeah, I think so.
And, I mean, no, I'm not gonna vote for everyone here, I mean, I'm saying that in general, uh, but, but what's the option?
Right.
Right, right, we, we don't have, yeah. The, uh. Would we be better off, since we're having such a hard time hiring, are, is there any argument to be made that we create a higher paying position that could do a few different things, or is there anything like that that might be worth looking at to make these, these positions more attractive?
I mean, no, for te, I mean, that's, that's the salary schedule for teachers.
You can't, you really can't do that.
No. It's like, no, she's differentiated and, no, you can't do that.
But I know what you mean, that would be nice.
I mean, that's, yeah, yeah.
I, I mean, there's some schools that have done hiring bonuses, I mean, some schools have gotten burnt during hiring bonuses, hiring and people left.
Right.
Um, if you, if we subtracted the two S R teachers, their benefits, and then added in the halftime proposal and subtracted the surplus, I don't know how you wanna use that, we're at nine one six six oh two eight, which is.
That's without the surplus.
That's, I've subtracted the surplus.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Which gets you pretty close to what we, what we are currently.
No, it's almost.
It's not level funded, but, but.
Close.
Pretty close.
It's closer, yeah. So that's with the ski program, that's with the music increase. Um, I mean, that was, we, we've added two days to that position, I know that the goal, um, is it a slow roll, is it next year it's one day for music and the following year the, the additional day to, to grow that program, I mean, it's not gonna be huge amounts of money, but it's probably many thousand dollars, you know, that, so.
Yeah, but it's like that that gets to that point, it's like, not just to.
I know.
Way to just to do it.
Just go.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
So looking, looking at these numbers for reading and math, makes me wonder if we can hit the intervention staying in the grade pods, or if we would be in better shape teaching kids where they are. Like.
Meaning mixing grades and.
Mixing, yeah.
Kids at their reading level or whatever.
I'm just like thinking outside the box. In a non-COVID year, mixing like, we don't mix right now, yeah.
But you might feel the next one, yeah.
But sometimes we do that, like, if the reading levels, you know, you could take this for different grade levels.
I mean, I guess I just like picture kind of like structuring the day so that, you know, all K two, E L A happens at the same time and.
It's tricky, though, because then, then you have all of your resources, so they actually stagger it so that like, um, Jenny Knight, the interventionist.
Right.
So they'll, K will do reading at a different time, so Jenny can be there and then she can join first, um, so it's, you know.
But the interventionist is trying to get them to keep up with the class.
The interventionist, I mean, the way that it's working in K one, um, the interventionist is actually doing some directed instruction, whole group, some small group. They're doing, uh, you know, a very explicit, you know, direct teach.
Yeah.
And then they're getting kids in small groups and they're using the adults to meet kids where they're at, um, in those, in those differentiated groups.
So if you differentiate a larger group.
You could mix, yeah.
Yeah, like if you mixed and differentiated, you may not have that different, I don't know, I'm just thinking outside the box.
Well, and then that could also address some of the issue of like gifted and talented programming and stuff like that, like right now, we just don't even.
Right.
Worry with that.
And I don't wanna lay that in the negative.
We just don't have the.
We try.
There's some, there's some.
A little bit here and there.
There are some interventions that I think are, are actually, are working really well, actually, that are going on right now, um, and I'm, I'm.
On the up, on, on the upper level of?
Uh, yeah, I mean, in sixth and. Because they are, because they're running small groups, they can do that, like, you know, the most qualified person should be working with the lowest students. Like, that's, that's just how it should be, so that might mean the classroom teacher has more, like, those, uh, like in fifth grade, they're O G trained. Um, Anna's O G trained, so she might be working with some kids that are really struggling in reading and the interventionist might be pulling the mid-level group or the high group and doing the extension. It's not across the board, but there are small pockets of it where it's working. And it's fluid, those groups change and that's what it should be.
Yeah, right.
And, uh, they did, they did just, um, so we have, uh, an S U wide now M T S S system that we're trying to implement and the interventionists are meeting and Brittany and Angie and Patty and Lindsay's our M T S S coordinator. And, um, we, uh, we have a pretty, pretty efficient system in place. And our interventionists have started really working with the teachers, looking at data and addressing the gaps, um, which is great, yeah, they're picking goals and there's, they're, in fact, they were just meeting, seven eighteen was just meeting today, coming up with a common goal, like, looking at the data, and it's hard when it's like, it's, it's easier as a teacher when you're looking at your own data, but when you're looking at a larger pool of data, finding that, um, what are we gonna work on? But they were able to pull it out and, um, they're all gonna work on a common goal among the team.
Can't remember what it was, expressions, uh.
For E L A for both seven and eight, that, I was working with those two and it was around finding a claim, writing specifically, finding a claim and using evidence to support whatever their claim is.
Claim, evidence, reasoning.
Yep.
It does.
Um, one weakness, whatever.
Yeah.
Something.
Yep. All right, so what are you, what are you thinking?
Everything?
That's what I'm thinking. That's what I'm.
Just put it in.
They need it, they, yeah.
We, we have one more shot in January, dude.
Maybe busy with this.
Yeah, what?
I'm thinking the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we'll know when we get the tax rates, then we can have a conversation.
Yeah.
I don't.
About the surplus too, at that point.
Yeah. So I'll take the S R funded teachers out.
Yep.
And I'll add the halftime.
They were in S R, we looked at that yesterday, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
And the two libraries.
And the what?
Two libraries.
Oh, my God.
The two little libraries, yes.
Throw in that eight dollars.
Are we really supposed to?
Well, I mean.
I, we're not gonna do it now.
Who thought, that was actually, that was a genius move, actually.
I know.
Have you taken this better into one?
Yeah, that was very, very smart. You did a great job.
They did a nice job.
A great job. I mean, I've known those kids since kindergarten, I'm not gonna pick.
Right.
And the one's a monster and one's like this way to Narnia, how are we gonna pick them?
No, they'll be.
Those will look nice when they're done, too.
Yeah, they'll be, they'll, I mean, Tina has done such an amazing.
She's amazing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
She's got a lot of energy, boy, she's good.
Yeah, and I will say, we, you know, we did, I shared earlier that staff stress is high, so we took the pressure off a little bit with collaborative practices and Tina emailed me, because part of that collaborative practices time was for planning, planning I T L units. And she emailed the teams, because she has like a set schedule for the year with all the teams, and they all wanna continue to.
Good, that's great.
Yes, so that was really good news.
Good.
Sometimes if people can choose it rather than.
No, it's also like you're seeing that, I mean, there's such benefit in, like, team planning and team teaching and, yeah, and they, they saw it happen and it's not, it's not, they're not looking at this extra.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, on that, and you should, if you're free someday, you should do the story walk, it's.
I did, I did.
Oh, yeah. It'd be awesome, so.
It's very cool.
Yep.
I'd say we should do that for our next board meeting, but that'll be January.
It'll be cold.
It could be cold and dark and icy.
We're not doing, we're not doing that.
Oh, a team.
Is it a phone?
Oh, I see.
Oh, that would be.
You'd have a torch.
It'd be cold if it was a phone.
I wonder if one of you would tricked drawing the other way to, yeah, what we were doing, we were looking at the place to put the, the outdoor classrooms, I remember we were walking through the woods doing something.
I can do a snowsuit.
Snowsuit.
But we did.
There was a couple of these.
I also didn't share this, but we did, um, speaking of the seventeen acre woods, um, Jennifer Waite, we just, um, submitted a grant of, uh, yeah, there's grant money available and she submitted a, maybe it's, whatever it is, you have to write up.
Proposal.
Proposal.
Seven to nine o'clock.
Yeah, so that just went in, I mean, it's, it's not a, I mean, there are a lot of applicants, but.
Yeah, so we'll see what happens.
Get some money for that, yeah. Okay, so leave the music teacher full-time.
Yeah.
Some of the, we're all in right now.
What do you want me to do with the ski program?
I don't know.
Teach them to read on the bus.
Bringing books to the house.
I don't know. I mean, it, it, that is, it is to think about, you know, cutting some instructional time out of the day is hard, but it's also, it could, you know.
They need fun.
Very positive, a very positive outdoor.
I think a lot of thought went into that.
I do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should.
And the goal was.
Leave it in and, yeah.
And we have equity policy.
Well, that's also, what is it, six weeks?
We do have an equity policy, so I'm happy to hear you say that, Scott, because I would, I agree with you. Yeah, we leave it or we don't do it, and I know that's heartbreaking because we grew up with the ski program. I mean, I'm not gonna get it, but I'm.
Leave it or not. Um, yeah, I think right now I'll leave everything, because we don't really know anything.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cutting anything right now and we don't even know any of it.
I will throw out, um, with the surplus, um, this building's aging, so.
You could put something in the capital reserve.
Yeah, we could, I could see a world where we put, you know, maybe a third of it into capital reserve and then two-thirds to tax reduction.
Okay.
Um, especially if the state's gonna really help us with tax reduction this year, then maybe we keep more of it for the capital reserve because our pipes are gonna keep breaking.
Yep.
Our radiators are gonna keep breaking.
And what does Craig really need in the kitchen?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, do you want to, do you want the, do you want a warrant for the?
For the warmer?
Point four thousand, I think.
What are they called?
What's the, I mean, did.
It's not a warmer, it's a whole new service line.
Service line.
It's a service line.
Yeah.
That line is.
I mean, I think upgrading to an actual sneeze guard would be pretty.
Definitely.
Rather than a plastic glass, it looks so bad.
He was like, this is forty years old. Yeah, I mean, we're not a pandemic, I think we can buy a sneeze guard.
Yeah.
Although we're all wearing them, so maybe we don't need them.
Right.
And we don't know if we're ever.
Twenty-two, it looks like twenty-two five seventy-eight.
Yeah.
Twenty-two five seventy-eight.
Yep.
So if you.
So how does that work?
Jim's number on the water, we care.
I don't have that number, do you?
No, he said he's gonna get it, we need it.
Okay.
And then Ed can write those two warrants, he'll turn to that.
Okay.
If we put money into the capital reserve.
We're just about to.
He's spending it right away, yeah.
You're almost spending it right away.
I guess, I guess we just do that.
Which means, well, you could do that or keep the capital reserve, I, I see what you're saying, the logic that maybe you roll, keep the capital reserve, whereas roll the whole thing into taxes and just put those two items in the budget.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying? Yeah.
Yeah, and then just reduce the budget.
Then you're not, A, you don't have to warrant it.
Right.
Right?
I see.
And, and, and B, you still have the same amount of capital reserve, you haven't exhausted it.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
And we'll get those numbers, we'll get the number on the water.
We can bring it next time. When does it have to be written, is that a date?
No, it's just the same time as the, as the, we go to print, which is the end of January, so we're okay, we've got time.
It feels like we're always racing this clock.
Unless it gets moved, which is a possibility, so, yeah.
Right. It almost got moved too far last year, it's like so.
That was like.
This is June, January, and then presenting in June.
I know, I know, and I was like, and it was so gorgeous out somewhere, I was like, why am I here? Still talking.
How could they just?
Oh, it's really.
May, yeah.
Was it not when they push it back to, into the summer?
We did push it back, yeah, we did.
It was May.
Uh, it was May.
No, I'm saying, could the state push it back into the summer, would they do that?
I don't think it pushes it into the summer.
I mean, if they pushed it till like end of March, you know, early.
March and May.
April, something to do April.
But I think it's town by town.
Town could both have a different date.
I mean, I don't think the state.
Yeah, that's true.
It, it was town by town last year.
Last year, the state authorized the select board to set their own date.
Right.
Whereas right now, you have to do it by a whole of the public, you could not change that date now.
That's right.
Right.
I bet they're.
The legislature would have to waive that.
I can't see them.
Oh, it's because it was a state of emergency last year.
That's right, that's, that's why this capital reserve is never happening again.
But how are you gonna convene?
And also they were slow with the numbers.
How are you gonna convene a building full of people right now?
Yeah. I don't know.
They, at the select board meeting on Monday night, I guess they allocated money in case they need to mail Australian ballots to everybody again. So they're, clearly they're entertaining that priority.
They really, wow.
Yes.
Well, there's a new strand, they.
I know.
We just don't know what's gonna, yeah.
I don't wanna think about it, I know what you mean.
You gotta be prepared.
But again, the public meetings, it's not in the school, is it?
No, but it's, uh, our meeting?
Our, our annual meeting is.
Is it at Damon, is that Damon Hall?
It's at Damon Hall.
Not that well attended, so that one, I mean, the town meeting's packed, like, so.
Oh, yeah, ours is.
Yeah.
My point is, we're not gonna have to use the school building.
No.
If we still got crazy strands going on, variant.
I mean, if, if Omicron is as serious as some of the scenarios seem to indicate, I think that, I don't think they could have an in-person town meeting.
I doubt it.
In March, it just, it doesn't seem possible.
I guess we'll have to see post-holiday, right?
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Yep.
Who would have other thought?
How do we get more people, that's.
I know.
That's the other.
I still think that's the key, because even if that's seventy, eighty percent, you're still not.
Yeah.
Quite there.
I mean, there is, one of the, one of the scenarios is that Omicron is very transmissible but very mild.
Yeah.
And so it'll move through and there will be someone.
So people don't get quite as sick, you mean?
Well, and it also. Yeah, and that's, that's one of the things they're looking at, but they just don't, they don't know yet.
Yeah.
I've also heard that with all, you know, with all the new treatments and stuff, people aren't getting as sick, but yet, these ICU beds are just maxed out.
Yeah.
So somebody's getting really sick with this.
Yeah, and it's mostly, it's like ninety percent unvaccinated in the ICU beds, yeah.
Is that what's, is that?
Ninety percent, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
That's what they said today, yeah.
That's interesting.
Okay, I'm gonna keep this moving, do you have any items for action?
I remember, no, wait, back to the, uh, budget discussion and just, um, the structure again, oh, David, you could answer this, I think. Getting back to that S U decision on how to divvy up the food assessment, I've been giving that a lot of thought and people that have attended S U board meetings know I've been giving that a lot of thought. But it, I, something struck me that I had to ask myself, is the food program monies that were, that were, that are still, the assessment, uh, mechanism is still up in the air, is that the whole program, David, including Craig Licarno, for instance? And, uh, buying supplies, food, energy, uh, human resources, everything?
Yes, it is. It is.
Okay, that's what I, I needed to get, um, I had that.
Yeah, I don't know why, food service has always been operated almost like its own business, like the school does.
Because that's where.
It's a separate fund.
That kinda like brings into question for me more, it kinda fortifies my position, I'm sorry, but the, uh, I, I won't go into it now, I'm just.
You can Monday night, though.
Yeah. But.
You've been very consistent, Scott, there's no question about it, you've, you've advocated, you know, and it, and the truth is, you know, it's not a huge, huge difference, but it is a difference, I mean, you know, we'll, we'll look at that again, Larry's got a little scenario he's gonna bring us through on Monday night, and then people can just comment and discuss it, really is the point, that's how we decided the other assessments, by, by board vote, you know, and, and I think we've always pulled equipment out of that, because like the food line, or Windsor just bought a very new food line, and that's not part of the food. Windsor paid for that food line, right, so, and that's what, that's what we do, you know, if the refrigerator goes, or the cooler goes down here, Hartland's gonna pick up that cooler, right? But it really is.
The big equipment is. Things that are stay, like at the school.
Yeah, so equipment is defined, defined as something that is permanent, right?
So really, the.
Not consumable, not consumable.
The big question then, is, you know, to what degree do, do, does counting student meals really reflect, like, the, the resources that are needed for a whole district-wide food program?
Right.
And, um, yeah, I think that's a, a big question, and one thing I know for sure from being in the small business world is that smaller businesses don't, don't operate with, with an easily commensurate, like, um, you know, if, if you're looking at the big business and they're doing a hundred things, the small business that's doing ten is not getting by with just a tenth of the costs and the operating op, costs. It's, it's taking a lot more than a tenth of the operating cost to operate small businesses because of fixed costs and, and inefficiencies that go on. You can call them inefficiencies, or you, just higher costs per unit.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I think that's a, that's a built-in, um, question here.
Yeah.
And we're focusing on student numbers versus equalized pupil, like it's some kind of, um, I don't know, like it's the truth, and I just, I'm questioning whether those student numbers are really.
Also, we don't know what's gonna happen with equalized pupil, that's right, and that, that could, I mean, we've got this rough, I don't know if anybody saw that, but they did send out the rough numbers of.
Oh, those aren't like rough, those aren't the real ones.
Those are real rough, yeah, but, but, and we didn't vote terribly well, I thought we'd voted better than that, but we were, we didn't gain a lot in that equalized pupil in any of our three districts, but I don't know if you saw that enough. Well, one of the things I thought you were saying, Scott, is, because that's a good point, we talk about student count, which is the potential number of kids that could be served. But then there's also the kids that are served, right, and what it takes, uh, in terms of employees to serve, you know, so it's almost like a, it's almost like a reverse, right, the more kids you're serving, the more employees it takes to serve those, right, maybe, I mean, you know, and it's, it's, yeah, like, for example, Scott and Rodney both, right, uh, have been, they've been at Weathersfield all this week. And that's coming out of everybody's budget, but they were down one cook at Weathersfield.
Yeah, that doesn't, that's not normal, though, like, that's not like, and that's just like a crap shoot of like, who's sick and where are your essences and all that kinda stuff, so it's not like you can measure Craig's time apples to apples of where, because he's just gonna go where the fire is.
Right.
Yeah. Which is what happened, or what I'm saying is, my point in that, again, I don't have any horses in the race, so I, I, but I mean, in terms of what Scott's saying, is that, you know, because that is a crap shoot, and it's, and it's incidental, and it's variant, you know, it's just a question of whether or not you wanna.
Right, I mean, that's a really good point, Dave, because like, the, at what point are we going to like, look at counting student meals as like, like it's the truth of that, in the whole program, like it's reflective of all, of all spending in the program, and that you've got, so you've got employees moving around, you've got, um, the other, the other thing that's very important is that nowhere in the SU board governance is, do you look at students and then put board members on the SU board? There's not, there's, the SU board has twelve board members, and it not, it does not reflect in any way, shape, or form.
We don't represent that population.
The populations in the four, in the four towns or the three, or the three school districts.
We decided to keep it three.
So why, why, why in this respect are we focusing on counting individuals?
Well.
As like some, like it's some.
It's kind of about the high school tuition costs, though.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only reason, right, is that you just, it would be hard to say to your taxpayers, we are paying food costs twice for these students.
Yeah, but the truth is, we've already been saying that to the taxpayers, because we are spending by equalized pupil across, and the whole SU, on all the SU assessments today are divvied up that way.
Right.
And so it's really a step backwards from, from a decision that was made.
So I, okay, so I'm gonna stop for a second.
Yeah.
There are five employees in Windsor to serve kids.
That includes Rodney.
There are two and a half in Hartland. And that's based on the number of people in the building. So to say that we're gonna divvy it up by equalized pupil, and we're gonna pay for two of Windsor's employees to serve kids in Hartland.
When we're already writing checks for food service.
Like, that doesn't make any sense.
I don't understand, why, why would they be paying for Windsor's employees?
Because we would be, we would be supplementing their need for five employees.
It's all part of that food service budget.
But it's, it's still just an over, um, you know, it's, it's still just a reliance on, the point I'm trying to make is that the reliance on counting meals is like a false sense of security that, that we understand where Craig's emphasis is are, where the teams, and, I mean, even the, even to, even the employee technical, like, Nikki, sorry, um, that, those employees may, I mean, I think the point that people, that the board made years ago is that, um, those employees are, that we're all in this together, and that, like, and like, what's happening now in Weathersfield, and they went down there because they needed to, and those employees are, are part of a system, and they would, um, in a heartbeat, help out Hartland, or, or.
But Craig, Craig's not gonna send three extra staff over here, because, and us have five staff here for a week, because, just because. You know, like, it's not gonna, like, he's gonna ever do that. He's gonna, staff may move around to fill the holes, but the staffing need at that school will always be five.
I just, I don't.
And the staffing need here will always be two and a half.
Yeah.
I just don't share that confidence, that, that that's, that it's written, that it's that chiseled in still.
I think it's worth a conversation with Craig, because it is, it, it, it comes down to the manpower of, of food production. You know, of like, how many carrots can you chop, how much can you do, the way you're gonna do, and, and so how many meals do you get out the door? And yeah, you know, you have some staff that are more efficient than others, but I have confidence with him saying, I can do this with two and a half staff, I can do this with six staff, I can do this with this, and these are my needs. Um, I don't think he's, I don't think, I think he's pretty savvy at understanding what those, what those needs are.
And that's where the.
In that sense, so, and it's more, hold on, so I think it's more around, what fluctuates is not the individual school needs, like, that's a set thing. Like, this is what, you, you serve these meals and this number of kids, that's pretty set. What's, what fluctuates and changes in the needs is really Rodney and Craig at the top, filling in those unpredictable needs. And they're the ones at the top that are doing, ordering for the whole SU, trying to manage the staff of the whole SU and all of that, so it's really those two positions that are more, we don't know, you know, that are more like, we don't know.
Homistic, yeah, yeah.
And whereas all the other staff, you know, all the other expenditures, like the food and the staffing within each school, is pretty, pretty square, like, it's pretty predictable, um, in that sense.
Yeah, well, I, I don't, I'm not clear enough on that.
I guess, so, so to take a step back on a budgeting standpoint, where I have a really hard time is, and because I'm the one that has to stand up in front of the whole town and present this, our budget before Windsor came online was seventy thousand, our budget when Windsor came online was a hundred and eight thousand. And so I have to explain that nothing changed in our program, and we're gonna pay that much more money for the exact same program, because another school came online. And that's where I'm like, this doesn't.
There must have been something, what about Rodney?
No, that, it, it changed because Windsor came online, and we are now subsidizing that program.
Well, the whole.
Because we're doing it by equalized pupil. That's where, that's where I like, I don't feel like I can stand up in front of the community and say, we have this budget increase, and that's where I like, raised a stink last year. Because that forced me to have to stand up and say, this is what we agree on.
But there's only one program in the whole slate of SU services, Nikki, and so.
I agree.
There's, there's, I mean, the, our district gets, I mean, if we really wanted to start pulling apart, like, what it costs, our share of the transportation budget, for instance, or our share of special education.
I think that's something that hits me, Scott, that I, that I do wonder about, because I, you know, where do we, when do we decide to do equalized pupil and when not to, and we kinda went through that adjustment with the, um, tech.
The tech was, that was a relegated one, yeah.
And it was gonna be a hit, and we knew, but we knew.
That was a long conversation.
But we knew it was better for.
For the greater good, we would, I mean, in a sense, you know, now everybody can have, now we don't have to worry about anybody in the union not having a Chromebook, because we've spread this out, and, and we've saved money over that, we don't get to save money over this, like, I, I feel both sides, but I, I worry about what, it, what will be asked to look at besides food or next, but like, we can't split everything else, we can't split everything out.
And this is the only one that I feel that way of.
I understand that.
Right, yeah.
And I think maybe part of it is the history of it being run as its own business, for so, and every, and, I mean, it's no fault of the supervisor, it's, that's how it's run, so I think that's why it's probably easier to think about and do, and I'm not advocating really honestly either way, but I think that's probably why it's a sticky point.
Yeah.
And it's also.
It's a lot, it's a chunk of money.
The last time we looked at everything, we had Hartland, um, by virtue of how many meals, like, the percentage of our kids that take meals. We are also the most solvent of all the three schools, so just by that, we're already contributing more to the food program because of what our kids eat.
Yeah.
And because of the way that our school individually in this building supports the program more than other buildings. And that, it, it, to me, I guess, and some of it's because Beth and I worked the last five or six years to get this. I mean, we worked so hard to get this program off the ground.
And you spent a lot of time talking with Windsor, but.
And we tried really hard to get Windsor on board, and they were like, no, 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 we can't do this.
Initially.
Initially, and then. And it was a big step for them, because they had to get, they had to have a lot of employees that, they had to get unionized, that was not how it was.
Yeah, they took a lot off.
So that was a big initial hit for them.
And I think that was one of the reasons you also felt, maybe for a year or two, you, you know, to help them make that transition, which was good.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, you could also, I think also another thing last year was because we were universal, and it wasn't that any one school was generating the money, you thought about that too.
Right. Right.
So this is, this is.
But, yeah, yeah.
I don't know whether we'll be universal.
The other thing that came to mind is like the decision-making that goes on in the food program, and like, for instance, there was a lot of discussion in the last handful of months about a possible another, another position that would focus on.
Yeah, a program board.
I forgot what that position was called, but.
Yeah.
Let's just imagine that there is a, that we were at a meeting, and that we're gonna create a, a subcommittee at the SU meeting, um, and look into that further and have a few, uh, meetings in, in the central office. It would most likely be a board member from each district, it wouldn't be, when, you know, would it be one board member from Hartland, two from Ascutney, and a half a board member from Weathersfield? You know, I'm just being funny here, but, you know, I'm saying like, there's a limit to, there's even a limit in our minds where we're going to, um, think about meal counts, or we're going to think about.
But that's, yeah, like, adding a position to a program, if it's food, if it's tech, if it's whatever, I don't know if that's really, I mean, our role is policy, you know? So I think as board members, it's really up to the people that are running the program to say, this is what we need, because we wanna reach the goals that we've all agreed on, and that's, that's why we want this, you know, we wanna do this, this, have this position or whatever. So I don't think it's necessarily, why would board members be sitting around discussing a position? You know, like, that doesn't actually seem like.
No, no, it's the, um, I think it, what I was, my example.
Well, you are, you are one of the few SUs, and I always thought this was amazing, you're one of the few SUs that doesn't divide up your SU membership by, by count, right? I mean, you've got three, 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 and three, and all, no matter how small the town is or how big the town is, I mean, that's pretty unique when you, I'm not saying that that advocates for what you're saying, but, and, I mean, that is another place where you split it up in those decisions.
I do like thinking about it as a whole.
Yeah.
It's not easy, because you've got sort of.
Some of the comments that were thrown around, you know, half a dozen years ago, were, um, when the study committee was over, was like, it didn't look like it was gonna go as a unified district, it was like, well, let's make this the, the best SU ever, or the world-class SU, or something.
We can do it without merging.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, I think there was a lot, I think there was a lot of great stuff that came out of that, that is still in place.
And then COVID hit.
In fact, I would say the food program is actually like an expression of that.
Yeah.
Of that vision that we discussed all those years ago.
Okay, I think we're gonna talk about.
Yeah, well, Monday, it's gonna be a Christmas discussion on Monday.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a Christmas.
And I don't think we had any items for action, oh, we need to set the next agenda, uh, we need budget.
Do we need to do anything for the libraries?
Uh, I think without.
We could just say.
We decided.
Yeah, she, I think she, you've kinda told her.
Yeah, I think we decided on, yeah.
We'll get the official word out.
Yeah, she didn't need a, and then.
We would love to do a ribbon-cutting ceremony.
That would be nice.
And they're a good twenty feet apart, so.
Or we could do one.
The library.
You could do one, the library might allow that, huh?
Yeah, do the library. Yes, yeah. You know, um, we're at the rec.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The rec.
Outside the rec, that's a good idea, that's a good one.
That's a great idea, actually, because kids are there, that would be an easy place for.
Mm-hmm.
They're all really cool, they're all cool.
Like, kids get stuck, like, I just think it's.
Kids get stuck there all the time.
Yeah, where are our kids stuck? They're beautiful. They're stuck in the rec, they're stuck at the library, and they're stuck at school.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Yeah, I'll make sure Tina knows, and I'll, I'll meet with five, six, and just let them know that you, for now.
Like, two?
Yeah.
Yeah, like them both, and they're both in.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So budget will be a big one, so I wouldn't pile too much more on.
Budget will be a big one. Yeah, budget's gonna be big, um.
I was looking at some of these others, though, I wonder, we haven't, um. I think you know the radar list that absolutely needs to be.
Oh, I did just wanna say to the SU reps, that I was so glad to see the item about, uh, intellectual freedom and libraries on the SU agenda. And I, 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 as a non-voting, as a, not a voting member, I just wanted to express my support for that, which I'm sure.
So it was like, our meeting is like.
Yeah.
Is that the day you guys get back to school? Are, you mean our next board meeting?
Are you the first Tuesday of the month?
We're the first Tuesday.
Yeah, we're the first Tuesday.
Which is the fourth, is that the first to school?
Yes.
It's in service.
It's service on the fourth, and then.
I can see it both ways.
I think that, this is the end.
I, I think like the thing that I just.
I believe, let me just find my calendar.
Come back to is like, we're doing all these things, and we're asking our taxpayers to support, to support us, and to support us, adding those things to the budget, and it's just.
So where are we, we're, um.
I just have a lot of time.
It'll be January third, fourth?
Express my, I think it's okay there. Are we good with that, Dave?
Yeah.
Twice. It's an in-service for you guys. That's where it comes down to.
We're in the in-service, but that works for us, the rest.
But it's not that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
What'd you say, is it first January?
Decision of my second order. Save money, so it would be better for the tax.
Will you make sure you're on time, okay?
And I think you can say of your new job?
For Easter.
What is it? On this, I'm from a school in a virgin's area, and I'm from a.
They beat us to it.
Yeah.
They, they beat me, they beat you.
They beat us.
That's what I wanted. Yep.
You know, and I say, you lose, you lose.
She's gonna define the job.
I tried, but.
Yeah, how did that happen?
It'll be good.
That is a missed opportunity for us.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not.
We let her, we let them trade her.
It's not like a moving, so I know.
She's still here, so you could leave there.
There are those X's, Y's.
We let them trade you.
It's like a trade deal.
I've already warned, I've already warned them.
You already talked to Barrett?
Absolutely, we have a good conversation.
Wow.
But that's, but it's interesting, it's.
That is, okay.
Barrett Williams.
And he was the principal there.
You know that, right?
Yeah.
All these lovely people.
What else do we have?
That is.
He's smart, he knew what he was doing.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, our district.
So the fourth, it works, right?
Six o'clock?
Right.
Six o'clock, I just sent the invite, actually.
The fourth and sixth.
Let's Craig cook it.
I know what's.
Yeah, let's get, this Bailey makes up.
That we can not pay twice.
Tell them we need two meals, what's that, service line?
I mean, I, I mean, if I think about.
That we decided goes in the budget for now, in the regular budget, not award.
I think that's a good idea. Let's look at it with it in.
Yes.
With, with, with that, because then you don't touch the capital reserve yet.
Yeah.
I think it's also a second question for like, how much, is it really twenty-five cents?
Twenty-two.
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 Yeah.
And then we'll get another feature, right?
If you could.
We'll get that other number for Jim.
If you could like make a spreadsheet of all of these, I can, we can talk later, of all of these variables. So like the halftime interventionist position and like.
A, B, C.
Well, and just have them so that we can drag them and, or add them together differently in the spreadsheet on the fly.
Okay.
So we can see different numbers really quickly. And I think, um, and I'm happy to help with that. And so we can like take Craig's number, take Jim's water pipe number, um, and then we can have that, you know, we'll have the surplus and then we can just plus and minus as needed.
Yeah.
So like your general budget, oh, and the ski program.
It's in there, but, but, so just those numbers so they can be pulled out.
Yeah, yeah, just have them all so that we can add and subtract and we can just do it all on the screen together.
Yep.
Rather than us like staring at our phones. Um, anything else besides the budget? I think COVID is part of the principal and superintendent's report permanently. I really feel like.
I wondered too, because some of the boards are doing mid-year retreats that, you know, I'm not saying for that night, but will you then go back to your radar list and say where are we?
Yeah, I, I'm really feeling like, especially after Sean's presentation today, we almost need to keep like mental health on the, um, but I don't know what mental health report would look like.
Well, I think we could also, what might be nice is to.
We used to serve, remember we were surveying.
We might have panorama data.
We have panorama data, we could also have a little.
Oh, no, not by January fourth. But we surveyed staff last year every Friday, remember?
We did do that.
And it gave us a good, it was a good gauge of your.
We can also, there's panorama surveys, the ad team could talk about panorama surveys for staff.
Yep.
If there's specific things that might be as easier actually to do.
Also Katie hasn't presented in a while either. Katie would, Katie would present.
Yeah.
Because HCRS and the clinicians and, you know, sort of the update on where that is, you know, she's even got numbers about how many people, how many kids are involved with some of the real clinical work. Sean doesn't do clinical work, but the clinicians do, so there's some of that going on. I think that's gonna probably be okay.
Yeah.
Because we're gonna need some time on budget.
Yeah, we need time on budget.
And we need any time for executive session two on that.
Well, we might, yeah.
Because by then, would we know any.
Yeah, we might know the time next year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Renewed contracts.
Yeah. Contracts need to be signed, they don't need to be signed until April.
April?
Yeah. No, I feel like budget and emotional health is.
It kind of surprises it all.
They're sort of related.
We're pretty much in survival mode, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Plus you also spend some time at the January and February meetings talking about your presentation.
Oh, yeah, right.
Who's gonna do what.
Once we get the numbers, we'll, we'll put that together.
Yep. Christine and I, like, I really mean it about just if there's, I mean, I almost feel like there's a day where you just feel like, like the whole school is, needs to do a pajama party and have hot chocolate in the gym one day, you know, I mean, just whatever.
I know, it's so hard.
Like, but they can't, of course, you're right, but in their rooms, I mean, just whatever, whatever it is, I feel like some surprises, some unexpected fun, some, you know, there's, yeah.
Yep.
Anything we can do to.
Let's start like Brittany hung snowflakes.
Sorry, Lindsay, Brittany hung snowflakes all over the building.
She did snowflakes. We did, I mean, we served hot chocolate last year a lot.
Yep.
Um, we haven't done that this year, we just, it, there is no time.
You have so much.
There's no time.
You're swapping, that was it. I would, and this is where I would like all come in and serve hot choc, but of course I really can't.
No, and that's fun for me, that's the stuff I love to do, so, but we can, yeah, we can make you conscious of it to do that. The kids love it. I mean, it's like the smallest thing, it's like really the chocolate milk that's about to go bad.
Stop that.
We're still.
Well, it, there's a date, you can't.
I know, you're just using it.
Right, it's totally fun.
Yes, it's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, get out of there.
You wanna call us, okay, okay, so, uh.
Hot chocolate, I'll have less.
Hot chocolate, okay, um.
Hey, there were a, a couple, there were several executive session topics that have gone kind of unaddressed.